Do your one-minute announcement.
Welcome. If everyone will have a seat at this time, and I'd like to ask that you please, like, silence your cell phones. Today, our pledge of allegiance is going to be with our students from Enterprise Elementary, and our national anthem will be our students from Pine Ridge High. So if you will please join me in standing for the pledge and the national anthem, we will remain standing following that for a moment of silence. Hello, from Enterprise Elementary School, my name is Mrs. Schuman, and this is our blended pre-K class. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody wait.
Hello, board members. My name is David Peralta, and this is-
Pine Ridge High School. And right now, we have our acapella group, Acapocalypse, and today we'll be performing the national anthem for you.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Came proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does the stars they go by and wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. Welcome to everyone that's here with us this evening, and to those of you that are listening at home. I'd like to go ahead and introduce the individuals that are here with me. On my far left, I have Mr. Carl Persis, representing District Four. Next to Mr. Persis is Mrs. Jessie Thompson, representing District Three. Next to Ms. Thompson is Mr. Aaron Wolf. He is our school board attorney. Over on my far right, I have Ms. Celeste Gilmore. She is our agency clerk. She's the person that kind of holds it all together for us. Next to Ms. Gilmore is Mr. Ruben Cologne, representing District Five. Then we have Mrs. Anita Burnett, she's our vice chair, and she's also representing District Two. To my immediate right is Dr. Carmen Balgobin, our superintendent. And I am Ms. Jamie Haynes, representing District One, and your chairwoman for this year. We are happy to have all of you here, and to have those of you that are listening at home. Items for approval on this agenda are 1.03, 2.02, 5.01, and 8.02. Public participation times for items on the consent agenda, 6:00 PM for items of general interest pertaining to public education in Volusia County. A total of up to 15 minutes will be provided for public comment at that time. Time will be provided for public comment on any action item before the board calls for a vote. And then there will be time provided at the end of our meeting for public comment for items of general interest pertaining to public education in Volusia County before items from the board superintendent or attorney are open for discussion at the end. I'd like to also add here, we want to hear from you. And in our workshop this morning, we talked about this, and we all agreed to continue to provide as much public input time as what we can, because we are here to hear what you need to tell us, and we appreciate each and every one of you that take the time to come to a school board meeting. Item 1.02, the district vision statement and board member comments. Our district vision statement is to create lifelong learners prepared for an ever-changing global society. At this time, I'd like to invite any of the board members that would like to share, and I see that Mr. Cologne has already pushed the button. You are up first, sir.
And so, lots happened since we were here. Happy New Year to everyone, and of course, we've kicked off the year with a bang. Shout out to our Deltona High wrestling team, who had a successful competition. Ms. Arcantara from Pine Ridge, who retired after many, many years, we're certainly going to miss her. They said, "I have a minute to accomplish this." How about those bucks? And I'm gonna leave that right there. Any bucks in the house? Shout out to, I'm not gonna, that's Jamie's, yep, yep. Beachside. Ladies and gentlemen, we opened at Beachside. That was amazing. FFA, if anybody knows of a great FFA teacher. Pine Ridge is looking for one. Congratulations to Ms. Arsonot, who won the spelling bee at Enterprise. And I will tell you that we had the Latin Festival in Deltona. It's a big deal in Deltona, 10,000 people. And our Pine Ridge students, the band opened up with Celia Cruz Jam, and let me tell you, the community was at awe. They could not believe that that was a high school band and chorus that was playing, because these kids were just amazing. And so, that was exciting. And last but not least, congratulations to our Deltona Middle Cyber Patriot members who had a successful competition last week. Thank you, my minute's up.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Anita Burnett.
Well, welcome back from the break. I hope everybody enjoyed some family time and got to relax a little. But I have a few things. One, mainland has two shout-outs for me this time, but I was invited right before the break to their inaugural National English Honor Society induction ceremony, and this is new for them, and Ms. Horton has sponsored that kindly, and she had 34 founding members inducted in. And it starts with the freshman year and goes up through senior year, and I know that she'll have more members next time, you know, as they more come in and they go through the classes, but very nice, and I thought that was great for her to be able to sponsor that. It's in addition to National Junior Honor Society. It's a little bit different. This is more focused on literacy. So, and then the mainland bucks, you know, they went to the state championship, the football team, so shout out. That's hard to do. I mean, all the classes or all the schools in the state, and they made it there, so shout out to them. And we did open Beachside, and so, Mr. Cologne and I were able to be there the other day, and it was amazing. You said amazing. It was amazing. It was great to see all the kids, and they funneled right into where they needed to go, and so many staff members there, happy to be there. It was a nice morning, so that's my minute.
Thank you. Next up is Jessie Thompson.
I too wanted to welcome everyone back and say Happy New Year. I just wanted to give a shout out to all the kids right now who are going through their spelling bees. I know they can get a little frantic, and tomorrow I'll be judging over in Coronado, and just these kids put their heart and soul in that, and to me, it's kind of the epitome of, you know, the elementary school education, so good luck to all you guys out there.
Mr. Persis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Happy New Year to all. Let's see, I'm trying to think back. Just before the break, went around with the Ormond Beach Chamber of Commerce and the mayor to recognize teachers of the quarter in the Ormond area, so I always enjoy doing that. We visited about nine or 10 schools. I made it to Beachside, not the day it opened, but that following Friday. I thought I'd give him a few days, you know, and settle in, but it was awesome. I love the school, I love the energy, and just to see the happy faces there, it's thrilling for those kids. And lastly, I was invited to be a judge at Ormond Beach Middle School for their social studies fair, and had a good time at Ormond Beach Middle School. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so, I'd like to start with the class that actually did the pledge today from Enterprise Elementary with the teacher, Mrs. Carol Schuman. I had the honor of teaching with her, because that's where I started my career 36 years ago, but I actually taught her oldest daughter 33 years ago, in first grade, so that'll give you an idea of how old she is now, but that was, they did a wonderful job. Those little pre-K kids, that was just amazing. As has been said, spelling bees are going on. I've been to McGinnis Elementary to judge a spelling bee, and I did the younger kids there, and I mean, just to see those little first and second graders get up and third graders and all that to spell. And then I was at DeBerry Elementary, and that was kind of a bit of a stiff competition there. At first, I wasn't sure, is anyone going to get knocked out, or are we going to be here all day? You could just tell that they had studied those words, and they just knew it. The heartbreaking thing, though, is when one's finally knocked out, and you see tears, like, there's nothing harder than to see tears on a child that has studied for the spelling bee. And then I did wood words, and I'm up next for Manatee Cove, but I did also have the honor Thursday afternoon to be here in the boardroom with our juniors for the tomorrow's leaders program, and talk to them, and I was so impressed when I walked in. They were all dressed professionally. They had been to the courthouse that day in a county council meeting, and we were the last stop, and it was just so nice to see young people that want to learn about their community and the government and how it operates, and so, future sponsors that, and they did a good job. And so, thank you for everyone being here, and Dr. Balgobin, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I would echo, I would say that I joined two of our board members over there when we went to Beachside. Want to say thank you to our community for making this possible for our students. It's such a beautiful building, and if you haven't passed by, I will tell you that staff member there, they're super excited to be in such a beautiful building, and so are our parents and our students, so thank you again to our community members for making it possible. And Ms. Haynes, I joined you, and super impressed with our students. They were very, they were dressed to impress at the event that we had in here in the board meeting, and we had some very, very good questions, and you know what? After listening to our students, here's what I would say to you. The work that you do day in and day out, and the belief system that you have in our students, it's paying off, because Volusia County will be in very good hands in the future. So, and I've got a whole slew of announcements later.
Thank you. So then, we're moving right along to item 1.03, which will be the approval of the minutes for the December 13, 2022 workshop work session and the regular session. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you. So, Mr. Cologne has made the motion, and Mr. Persis has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, we're moving along to item 2.01, agenda changes. Dr. Balgobin, are there any agenda changes before the agenda is presented to the board for approval?
Madam Chair, done from my end.
Board members, does anyone have any agenda changes? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the presented agenda?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Burnett. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. So, we have a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda. Is there any discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, we're moving into the section that I think we all enjoy the most, is when we get to section number three, because this is our recognition section tonight. We are proud, because we're going to recognize the Teacher of the Year finalist. There are five of them, and I was honored to be able to go and surprise all five of them with the announcement that they were one of our finalists. Dr. Balgobin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're super excited about this recognition, and our audience here today, we happen to have, as you stated beautifully, our five finalists for 2024, but also with us, we have our 2023 Teacher of the Year. So here's how we're gonna do, and we're gonna have a presentation done by our very, very own, one of the most wonderful partner in education you can ask for, Mr. Bob Davis. So I'm gonna ask him to come up at this time. I'm gonna share a little bit of a backstory with you, is that Mr. Davis is here today because he has a special presentation, not just for our five finalists, but also for our 2023 Teacher of the Year. So the backstory here is that I had a conversation with one of our board members who reminded me that last year, unfortunately, our 2023 Teacher of the Year, one of the package was never successfully delivered. So with that said, I know you do. So, Mr. Davis, I sent him a text, and he goes, "Don't worry, it's taken care of," and then while we were all on vacation, I got another confirmation text of what it really entails. So I would let him say that at the end as we present, because it's a beautiful package. But at this time, I would like to call up our 2023 Teacher of the Year, and as I call you up, please take a seat, because, Madam Chair and board members, each of our teachers have a very, very short message that they would like to deliver with us at the end, and then Mr. Davis will do the presentation, and we will take pictures. So at this time, I would like to call our 2023 Madison Miller to come on up, and just in case, for those of you who don't know Madison Miller, which I think all of you do, just a little bit, she was a teacher at-
She's coming.
She's, okay, she is, she's on her way. But, okay, so she can join us, but I'll tell you a little bit, she was a teacher at Chisholm Elementary when she first received this award, and then, from then to now, she has advanced in her career, and she's now serves as the assistant principal at Palm Terrace Elementary. So that's Madison Miller, she'll join us when she gets here. Our five finalists, as I call on you, come on up, take a seat, and I'll say a little bit about you. Ms. Vonda Morris, and you can see Spruce Creek, high in the house. It's hard to miss Dr. Sparker, right? So a little bit about Ms. Vonda Morris, she has taught with us for 28 years now. Classroom teacher, department chair, transition math specialist. She's the departmental instructional leader for the area of math. She's earned her master's degree in ed leadership and a master's degree in curriculum and instruction. She's quoted in one of the sharings that she had regarding her students, she said, quote unquote, "My students have taught and shared many of their life experiences with me. In doing so, they have managed to inspire and mold me. I desperately want all students who enter my presence to feel confident in who they are, what they do, and how they can positively influence others." And that's Ms. Vonda Morris for you, one of our finalists. Ms. Doty Gaines, I think she's in the house also, she's coming up. Seabreeze High. Doty has taught for us for so far 20 years, she still has a minimum of 15 more to go. Wonderful classroom teacher, department chair, Cambridge ACE coordinator. I'm not gonna talk about your passing rate right now, because I really don't want to put you on the spot, but she has earned a master's degree in science instruction, and she has been quoted in the following that she shared in one of her briefings. She says, "My one and my only inspiration is the teenagers who I have the honor of building relationships with every day. The open mind of a child is an amazing thing. Those aha moments where you realize they have learned something, and that something sometimes is what keeps me going." So, that's for us, Ms. Doty Gaines. Ms. Valerie Marcus, DeBerry Elementary School. Where's DeBerry? There she is. So, Ms. Marcus has taught for us 22 years, classroom teacher, academic coach, intervention teacher. She has a master's degree in ed leadership. She's been quoted in the following that she shared, quote unquote, "Helping instill confidence in a child is like unveiling a secret passageway into the hallway of success. Once a child truly sees their capability, the possibilities are endless. Every child can and will learn," all capitals, quote, end of quote. Thank you for being here. RJ Longstreet is in the house, and that's Ms. Cassandra Stewart. Where's Ms. Cassandra? Little bit about Ms. Stewart is that she's taught for us so far 15 years, has a whole lot more years to go here in Volusia County. Classroom teacher, she's been an apple teacher and assignment chair, media specialist. She has earned her master's degree in library and information services with an instructional technology focus, and she's been quoted in the following, quote unquote, "My passion for education was inspired by my desire to make memorable opportunities like I had as a student for others, to become the start of a ripple effect impacting beyond the teacher and student relations, extended into the family and even throughout the community." So thank you for seeing the much larger impact of what it takes to impact a student and their influence on their community, so RJ Longstreet. And last but not least, Ms. Tamika Harvard, Westside Elementary. It is in the house. So, Ms. Harvard has taught for us so far 19 years, classroom teacher, ESC teacher support facilitator, also an academic coach. Her master's degree is in exceptional student education, and quote unquote, she stated, "I have the pleasure of working with the most amazing students and colleagues, helping students grow their mindsets from 'I can do this' to 'I don't have to do this now, but I will get it,' to 'That's the kind of difference that we need to make each and every day, and that's what I strive for.'" So, welcome, Ms. Harvard. Has Madison made it yet? All right, that's okay. So, Mr. Davis, would you share, please?
I certainly will, and since you're elected, but that's elected, you should. Last two years, principal of the day. No, they can hear this sexy voice, don't worry about it. And they call me Socky Bob, so I got my closer camera. But at any rate, you're so deserving, and I guess the business people of Volusia County got a chance once again to be principal of the day. And I spoke to a young lady today who I've been after for about a year to adopt the school, and her remarks to me was, "Okay, Bob, I was principal of the day, and now I know what they have to do." So, we've got another one. So on behalf of Premier Hotels, which are all oceanfront, the Hilton Garden Inn, the Holiday Inn in Daytona Beach, the S. Western, the Holiday Inn in the shores, and I've forgotten the other one, we would like to give you a three-day, two-night gift certificate on the ocean. Schools is in the Adopt a School program, where we have mentors that come into your school and help the principal and the teachers do whatever has to be done, whether it's paint the curb at Stark Elementary, or put up signs, or help with reading and writing. or put up signs, or help with reading and writing. And don't tell them behind me, okay, this is a secret, that by the 25th of January, we will have four more schools, Pathway, Pines, Delan Middle School, and I forgot the other one. I've all got mentors, so don't tell them till we do it. That'll be number 60. Addison, but she's really here today. So that's Addison and I at her Christmas party. When she arrives, we'll stop the meeting and we'll take over. It's yours.
So, Mr. Davis, actually, we have 67 schools and 60 of those schools have an Adopt a School program through his generosity. But before we gather for a picture, each of the finalists, they have a short message that they've asked to deliver. And so we will start with, with Ms. Vonda Morris.
To Superintendent Balgobin, Madam Chair, Jamie Haynes, and the members of the Volusia County School Board, Futures, View, Dr. Sparker, the four finalists, parents, students, and any other stakeholders I have failed to identify by name or affiliation, good evening. I want to thank Dr. Balgobin for inviting me to greet the board and share a few highlights about my profession and experiences in teaching in Volusia County schools. I have had the pleasure of being an instructor at both New Smyrna Beach and Spruce Creek High Schools. Every year, some phenomenal students are vocal about their disgust for math on day one. However, by day 21, the students and I are dancing, laughing, and singing, yes, about math. To the students' surprise, they tolerate and enjoy the knowledge we exchange about life and math. The Good Book tells me that I should be a fisher of men and I can mount up on wings of eagles. Well, here in Volusia County, I am an example of a barracuda transformed into a hawk. I swam among teen cooters who grew in size, making waves now in their own ponds. I soar as a hawk to nourish my teen hawks and cover them under my wings, providing them with the skills to strengthen their wings and fly. I have been blessed by teaching, I have been blessed by teaching in Volusia County to share my love of math, to see my students in their elements as they share sorrows and victories, and to be a part of a faculty that feels more like a family. I have been allowed to blossom by sponsoring clubs and receiving top-notch training to prepare our students and teachers for the future. I have served as math co-chair, the current secretary of the Volusia County Teachers of Mathematics, and I score AP exams. Moreover, my daughters are educated, cared for, and supported by Volusia County Schools. My eldest, whom I call my New Smyrna Beach baby, will graduate in five months. And my youngest, my Creek baby, will matriculate to 10th grade. Therefore, I am excited to be named one of the five finalists for the Volusia County Schools. I am a proponent of leading with grace and respect, and I serve in the same manner. Thank you for the invite to speak before the board today. And today, as every day, is a great day to be a hawk.
Can I get a witness?
Look at Dr. Sparker back there, he's like... All right. She didn't wear orange, though, that's the only thing I will say.
Get some orange on there.
All right.
I have on red, because I am a sand craftsman.
All right, no competition in the room. Ms. Gaines, go for it.
Good evening, Superintendent Balgobin, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the school board and all community members. Thank you so much for allowing us the privilege of being here. It is truly an honor to be a representative of the thousands of amazing educators that serve Volusia County. I am so blessed to be considered amongst these esteemed group of finalists. Who would have thought, 25 years ago, when we were driving into Florida, my husband and I were driving 992, and we saw a sign that said, "High School." I said, "Honey, let's go over there and see if they have any job openings." I walked into school and met the principal. It was at that time I met the incomparable Mitch Moyer. He, he said, "Doty, I don't have any biology positions open, but I do have an Algebra 1A position open." And I was like, "Well, I'll take whatever I can get, I'm jobless, I might as well." So, my career at Volusia County began at Deland High School in South Portable City. And if you're an old-school Delandite, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Just when I thought Algebra 1A would be my only venture outside of biology, I've since continued a very diverse career, teaching everything from chemistry to physics, anatomy and physiology, middle school science, I've been a science coach, and I finally found my home at Seabreeze seven years ago, teaching biology and AP Bio. It was six years ago that I learned of a new program coming to the county called the ACE Program. I became a part of the original cadre and brought the program to the county and helped our school become an official Cambridge International Education Center. Since then, we've graduated 122 students who have all been accepted to four-year institutions, higher institutions, and earned their ACE diploma. It was an honor and a blessing to be able to watch these students grow during their high school years and help them reach their full potential. We started with 75 students, and now we have almost 300 students in the ACE cohort at Seabreeze. Their success, along with the program's success, has created an exciting buzz within our school and our community. Our school has produced incredible, and our program has produced incredible student leaders, scholars, athletes, and ambassadors, and I'm thrilled to be a part of it. Nothing excites me more than to have my present students come to me and tell me something awesome about their day, or have my former students show up at school board meetings, who are now at the University of Florida. And they come back and they share their experiences. I come to work every day for these little victories, because when they win, we all win.
Ms. Marcus?
All right, so I guess that, since we have to do our whole little mascot things, Eagles perch, soar! Dr. Balgobin, school board members, Madam Chair, my principal, Ms. Frazee, for coming today. Thank you all for inviting us finalists here today. This whole experience has been a bit surreal, but so memorable. It's definitely an honor to be here with all these ladies today. As teachers, we are generally very humble. So, being told to speak about ourselves for a minute to two is not a comfortable position for us up here. But, in fact, when I started realizing it and we were messaging each other about, "What are we gonna put in our speeches and what are you doing?" Because that happens. I realized my students are my accomplishments, and I can talk about them for hours. So, for your sake today, I'll keep it to a minute or two. 21 years as an educator. 21 years as a Volusia County Schools educator. 20 separate classes that have built a community throughout the year that we've spent together, making memories that hopefully will last us all a lifetime. That's over 600 students that have crossed the threshold of my elementary school classrooms and middle school as strangers, but left as part of my family. Countless teachers that, as an academic coach, I cheered on, I cried with, and I watched grow to become some of the best in the profession today. The moment six years ago, even after obtaining my master's degree in educational leadership, when I had a calling, a calling that said it was time to leave coaching and return to the classroom, because I needed the students as much as they needed me. COVID, the year where nothing was the same, except the goal, to love on the children. And that, we all did. My number-one goal in the classroom has always been to build relationships first, then work on everything else. These relationships that I form with students, teachers, administrators, and I've had some of the best, school, district staff, as well as parents, we've all created and worked together. And today, they are the reason I am the teacher I am. A teacher that's honored to be a top-five finalist, proud to be a Volusia County teacher, but more than anything, grateful to be able to play just a small part in the educational journey of each and every student I encounter. I can only hope that I hold a small piece of their hearts that matches this piece and mine, that's reserved right here, each and every day for them, now and forever. Thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
Balgobin, Madam Chair, school board members, of course, my principals who are here, community members, thank you for the invitation to come today. You said one to two minutes, so I'm gonna keep it there, for sure. My, my career here in Volusia County Schools started way before my 16 years of teaching. I am a product of Volusia County Schools. I went to Coronado, Chisholm, New Smyrna Beach Middle, and I'm an alumni of New Smyrna Beach High School. Cudas, yeah, Cuda Nation. So, I, that started my, my career, really, honestly, because as a future Florida educator of America, I received a pin as a president in high school, and that's where I came back. I came back to retrieve that job that I received that pin for. And sure enough, I did, and guess who hired me? Mr. Russell. Mr. Russell was the first person who hired me in Volusia County Schools. I started my career at Deltona Middle School. And so I figured what I would do is just kind of do a highlight from each one of those places I've been in the county in my career. And at Deltona Middle, one of my most memorable moments was when my students actually reached out to an author, Rodman Filbrick, he's the author of Freak the Money, it was in our curriculum at the time. And they wanted to produce a movie based on his screenplay that he had written. And so, they actually produced, developed films, created the film, recorded it. I had students that were not very high-level readers at all, that actually grew tremendously that year. My scores were some of the highest in the school. And then we had a red carpet night that evening. That was most memorable because I had so many emails from parents after the fact. That was kind of like my starting shining moment, where I was like, "This is what I need to do. I need to make memories for kids so that they truly own their education, so they remember it for years to come." And I still have gotten Facebook messages from a couple of those students from that class. Then I moved on to Orange City Elementary, and that's where I used my master's in library and information science degree as the media specialist there. And I have to say, as far as memorable moments, one of the most memorable things that we did there was that we created a flash mob. And we did that during testing time. Ms. Nkuski and some teachers and I over at Orange City, we created a parody of "Don't Stop Believin'." And we had the university high school band drumline come in, and it made the news journal, it was quite a memorable moment. Again, another memorable experience that comes up and, you know, Facebook timeline hops and gets everybody going. We all start texting each other, which is really good. As a teacher on assignment for Volusia County Schools for federal programs and grants, I was the apple teacher on the assignment, the first one that came along. So I got to start that initiative with, actually, with Ms. Haynes. She was my employee, or my, my boss at that time. I should say for that, that my most memorable thing was otterboxing 16,000 iPads, but, actually, the true impact was really just being in the classrooms, being with my colleagues, because I was just a teacher still, even though as a teacher, it was assignment, being inspired. We had, even Valerie was in a couple of my classes that I hosted. But being in their classrooms, being inspired by the things that they do. And then, using that to fix my practice too, and to make me better. So those were some of the most memorable moments. And that was in, you know, pre-K through 12th grade. I got to experience 53 schools and meet all the principals and, and all the different teachers, which was really special. And as a Longstreet employee, I came back to be a teacher mom. That's the whole reason why I left, my district position was to come be a mom. And so, when I got into the media center, I was told that it wasn't warm and inviting, and it needed to be that. And that's what we created over the past six years. We've created a warm, heartfelt environment, the heart and the hub of the school there at Longstreet. And because it is that, we now have community members that are in our school all the time. We have our local shores police department, we've had UCF, Bethune-Cookman, Embry-Riddle, all of these area businesses and communities have now adopted us as Cardinals, and we are, caring Cardinals who thrive by the sea because of that. There's my little plug for our mascots. But, thank you for letting us share a couple of highlights from our career.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart, and now, Ms. Harvard, Westside.
Good evening. Good evening, Superintendent Balgobin, Madam Chair, and school board members. Thank you so much for the invitation this evening. I am honored to be here and to be recognized as a Teacher of the Year finalist. This is my 20th year at Westside. I completed my senior internship at Westside Elementary, and I never left. That speaks to the love that I have for the school, its teachers, the community, and the families. As math coach, one of the most important things to me are the relationships that I've built with my colleagues and the students at Westside. One highlight of my career so far that speaks out louder than any other is that there are three young men, they were in my first class ever. I taught them in second grade, I looped with them to third grade, and I taught them again in fifth grade. Somehow by chance, I don't know if it's because they communicate and they keep in touch with me, but, um, they communicate and one of them reaches out to me every single year. We catch up, we communicate on how all three of them are doing. And before that conversation is done, every single time from each single one of them, it's Ms. Harvard, I remember what you taught me. That, to me, is most important to me, and as I stated, one of the biggest highlights thus far. This touches my heart, because something I taught them stayed with them. They teach me, I teach them, and those learned lessons stay with us forever. That's what teaching is all about. Thank you again for inviting me.
Madam Chair, if you would, I, I know that Ms. Madison Miller, she is watching, and she's listening to our board meeting this evening, and she will receive her, her presentation?
Yes, I got a message that, that she, I can't...
Perfect.
Tom Vitale and Jim Hogan, two both.
When I went there, Ms. Dr. Regal was the principal.
Ah, yeah, Tom.
Whitehead, Ames, Cars, Lawrence Temple, Charlie Hunter, Tom Vitale, and Karen Robinson, all loved me. They're ahead of you.
Yeah, it's good to be a Cardinal.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Now, if we can have the five finalists come on up, we'll take a picture, and then we can do one finalist at a time with their families that are here, their work family and their personal family. Very good. Very good.
And many fond memories.
Dr. Valgabin, Miss Roland.
Miss Roland.
Miss Roland. Miss Roland.
Valerie. Again, both of you.
Both of you.
Here, I'll take you, you gotta get into it.
All right, come on. Truva's the photographer. You're there, some people.
Yeah, exactly.
You're right there.
Alzirah gets a bad rap. That's cute.
They're right there, beautiful, all right, don't move, hold that baby up.
So adorable. I love it. I saw her when I... Who are you? Truva, did you get last four hours?
I wasn't in class.
Oh. She said it perfect. That's a tough one to say. Yeah, she said it perfect. Have a good evening, guys.
Bye-bye.
That was great.
Can't get any better than that.
I know. So filling.
At this time, we're gonna go back into the meeting. But I will say, there's nothing better than being able to honor our teachers. And those five women were outstanding. And we're looking forward to the Teacher of the Year banquet later this month to celebrate all of our teachers. So we're moving on to item 4.01, announcements by Dr. Carmen Valgabin, our superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few items that I'd like to share. And again, what I was saying is, it's so, it's so heartwarming, right? Because the field of education is just so special. And we all heard special stories of why these individuals chose the field, why they remain in the field. So once again, it's such a great way to start. But a couple announcements, our mid-years, every single school, they submit a school improvement plan to DOE at the beginning of the year, and mid-year, they're, they have to adjust the plan as needed based on data evidence. So at this point, I will share with you, January 27th is the date for which all of the course corrections for every SIB school improvement plan has to be updated. Our assistant superintendents and directors are working with schools, evaluating their data, looking at what those course corrections would look like, making sure that it's inserted and uploaded. So that's January 27th. Also, a couple of things I want to share, that one of the things that we did this year and, and last is that every school looked at their goals in their school improvement plan and made sure that there was clear connection to our strategic plan, so that there is no disconnect. And that, that is continuing to happen. Also, as it relates to our strategic plan, it's our roadmap, right? And we have five goals outlined in our roadmap of what we need to accomplish. Five goals, as a reminder, goal number one, always, high-quality instruction. It's why we exist as an organization, I always say that. Goal number two, high-quality staff. Goal number three, safe and supportive environment. Goal number four, resources and operational processes. And goal number five, communication and, and community engagement. So as it relates to all five goals, we are in the month of February, at the beginning, the first board workshop in February, or... Yes, we're looking for a workshop in February. I know that the deputy was gonna contact you on that. We're looking to do our mid-year review, which is the stocktake process. And basically, what that means, with full transparency here in the boardroom, we will have our goal leads and our strategy leads, which is basically cabinet members and a few directors. And what we're going to do is look at each strategy outlined for every goal, along with the activities. And we're going to examine the evidences to determine what is working, what are some areas that we need to course correct, and what is it that we're going to do about it. So we will share with you in full transparency, and we want our community to be aware so that they can engage with us as well. So that's coming up in the month of February. Couple of things I wanted to share with you, you met the amazing finalist here, and I think every... It will be a hard decision, I know for sure, but we're going to be celebrating at Jan... On January 20th, which is a Friday, we're going to have a banquet at the Daytona Beach Hilton. And I know that we will be there to celebrate with our, all of our teachers, that nominees that will be there. Couple of other things also stem. So the state allows two winners and an alternate from our district to participate in the Sunshine State Scholars Program. We have, we, we have several students that participated, and this year, Aksha Gupta, Aksha Gupta from Seabreeze High School, along with Jacob Friedman from Spruce Creek High School, they were selected. And the alternate is Fidha Chowdhury from Deland High School. That's the alternate student. So they will be here at the, at the next upcoming board meeting where they, where they will be recognized. And then I believe in April or March or April, they will also receive the statewide recognition. In addition to that, just a few more pages to go, Beatside. We were there at Beatside, and I think we have some pics that we will show at some point of Beatside, but they will have their ribbon cutting. We, we were there January, but they will also have their ribbon cutting that's coming up, and we're planning for that, so once I have the date solidified, it will be shared with all of you. Volusia County Public School has talent, as you know. So, please make a note of this, because you will have sufficient material for the rest of the year, also material that you can use for next year. January 25th at 6:00 PM at the theater right here in Deland, we have many, many staff members that will be participating in a must-see, must-see talented professionals. They're called, they're called the Talented Professionals of Volusia County Public School. Just a little bit of a peek for you. I believe our very own Mr. Angel Gomez will be performing La Bamba. With full... Look at that, you've got more people signing up to attend. Also, we were recognized Cognit Impact Conference at the Cognit Impact Conference that transpired a few weeks ago. Volusia County Public School was recognized among many other districts throughout the nation for standing out as school, as a school district that is truly committed to students' learning. There are indicators that were reviewed, evidences that were submitted, and we have an upcoming board meeting where we will be officially recognized, and we will receive the Cognit System of Distinction Awards. And this was based on our research that, that transpired. And we also have our Choice Fairs. You all attended Choice Fairs last year, it's gonna be a grand event again. Moms and dads, parents, guardians, if you're listening, please mark the following date. The East Side Fair will be at DSC Daytona State Campus on January the 18th. We will send more information to you with specific time. I, I know it's in the afternoon, I believe from 5:30 to 8:30. And then the West Side Fair will be at the center of Deltona, January 23rd. So please mark your calendars, you wanna be there, our school's staff will be there, students will be there. It really is a family event, but you get an opportunity to really shop for your students, because an education is so important, and knowing what you want and what your stu... Your children need, and having the opportunity to ask school-based personnel and view and see what that looks like, it's, it's truly remarkable. It's really a great experience, so I, I invite you to be there. And last but not least, last Friday, we toured some of our schools. So I had, we started at seven o'clock in the morning and did almost all of the high schools, believe it or not. I knew they're throughout the entire county. There are two schools that we didn't do because we're gonna do it at a different time, but every other school we, we toured, what did that tour look like? We actually wanted an inside look, so spoke to the principal, their leadership teams, looked at the data, visited classrooms, talked to teachers, talked to students. And so we have a small, 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 short video for you. I was told it's no more than seven minutes. And I wanted you to see a little bit, an inside look at our schools, of our schools. Mr. Gomez, you ready? The largest high school, how many students we have this year, Dr. Maria?
Almost 3,000. They're hovering around 3,000 depending on the day.
I can't wait to see and hear about some of the great things that they're doing.
Yeah, great kids.
There's nothing like that relationship and the connection, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning Bulldogs. All right, we gotta go, get to class, get to class, let's go. What are your goals?
I wanna double, the kids that are in the Ivy program now. And I also wanna add over 100 kids to our AP classes.
So I started going in exactly as you said in PLCs, talking to some of my best coaches, having them show me information, explain it to me, I would walk classrooms with them. I am here with one of the most phenomenal teachers that we have in our district.
So this is Dr. Valgabin, and she's just paying a visit. Oh.
Right?
Wow, that's cool.
I'm getting good at it, I am getting good at this. Read something, it's kinda hard, you read it a second time, you're gonna start picking up even more meaning. I love it, come here, sit. Wanted to come by and see your fabulous teacher, right? That you guys know that's a gem. You've got a brilliant mind, don't you? Thank you. Tell the staff I said thank you, okay? I like how you have the cohorts already. You're looking at what your teachers need, what type of refreshers they need.
Even when now, the testing was back into the equation, and the kids had to pass the test, and we were following, you know, and doing all these things all year long on those concordance scores, and we had the blue down, and we kept chipping away at that during the year. We still went up in our graduation rate to 92.7.
I wanted to come out today and first and foremost congratulate you.
Thank you.
For your passion, your dedication, and the incredible heights that you have been able to help us accomplish here at University with the students.
We try to have as many students in here as possible, just to get them used to the media center so that they'll come and check out books on their own instead of having to come with a class.
Yeah, it's the strategy behind it, right?
Yes, I'm a senior this year, yes.
Nice, Catherine, nice to meet you, I'm Carmen Valgabin.
And this is what we call a gallery walk, so it's like they're in a museum, enjoying each...
So they go from station to station. You know, it's called responsible choice-making, right?
Yes.
And you have the perfect students to exercise that.
She is our media specialist.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Thanks for coming in to visit.
I love your media center.
Thank you. We're going for sort of a copyhouse kind of college atmosphere, and the kids seem to really like it, so...
What you have been able to accomplish with high school students, it's, it's, it's short of just being genius. I love it, this is beautiful.
Thank you.
You guys made my day here, too. This is absolutely beautiful.
You're welcome anytime.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for holding the YouTube, wow, I am so impressed. Can I give you a hug?
You have friends?
I like your heart already.
Cambridge really is on the rise, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the culture, the climate, the student behavior, the, they focus on academics, and it's when you take a great group of people and you put them together that they believe in a vision, right? And they believe in students, and they're there to care for kids.
You're gonna see our core values, and, and we embed those core values in everything we do. It's part of our PBIS, and, and I think you'll see those, those qualities emulated by our student leaders as we go through.
Being in the Cambridge program, it pushed me to study, it pushed me to actually try very hard, so I feel more prepared now, thanks to Cambridge.
Our theater troupe is, well, there's about 30 of us, but no matter how many of us there are, it always feels like a family.
I had 30 of my students before Christmas break gaining their career certification already. So already 30 of these kids are certified electricians.
There's not a whole lot of people out there that has the skillset or the art of how to do it. So when you have the passion, the skillset, and the art all combined, you have to cherish that, right? And open yourselves up to learning as much as possible and asking questions, as many questions as you need to, and ensure that every single day that you walk out of here, that you're walking out, with one or two things that you didn't know when you came in.
Just her background and how much she is similar to me, I feel like I connected a lot with her, and just seeing how successful she has been, and the fact that she's coming here to my school, just... It just really touched my heart, and it makes me so happy, and I definitely loved this experience, and I can't wait to tell my family.
I thought she was very passionate, she was very upbeat, and I was happy to have someone like that at school. I think that's really important, to have someone really care for us, and what we're doing here is really important.
We heard from Dr. Valgabin today about the school district being a family, and I have felt nothing but that. I tell everybody, keep your eye on Panther Nation, don't take your eye off on what's happening here in Panther Nation.
Thank you so much. You guys have a good one, okay? I'll see you again.
Yes.
And anything you need, reach out.
Thank you so much for coming.
And all you're very well.
Thank you so much.
It was truly an amazing day and it's why I do what I do. But really, it takes a team and we have a powerful team here in this county. So, just want to share a little insight with you.
I think it's a great way to start off the 2023 year. So moving along to item 5.01, administrative appointments and transfers. Dr. Balgobin, do we have any administrative appointments for this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have five total for your consideration for approval. I would like to ask Mr. John Kraft to join us. There he is. So just to share a little bit with you, Mr. Kraft has earned his bachelor's degree in professional running addicts from Embry-Riddle University. He's been working with Volusia County Schools since 2013 when he started as an office specialist, three in human resources, and then quickly moved to a coordinator position in facilities, maintenance, and operations. Before he worked for Volusia County Schools, Mr. Kraft served our county in the Air Force and also gained experience as a maintenance superintendent. When he retired from the Air Force, he transitioned to civil service as the chief of facilities and government housing. Most recently, for Volusia County Schools, Mr. Kraft holds the position of assistant director in facilities, maintenance, and operations. And today, Chair and Board members, I'm recommending Mr. John Kraft as Director for Facilities Maintenance and Operations. If you approve this this evening, his effective date will be January 11th, 2023.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation for Mr. John Kraft as the Director for Facilities Maintenance and Operations. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I'll add something. So I had the chance first to meet his wife, Maria Kraft, who is in purchasing during the time when I was working in federal programs and grants and therefore then I met him. And I want to say first and foremost, we appreciate you being here, but we also want to thank you for your service in the Air Force, sir. Alright, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Balgobin, good afternoon and thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity and having the trust in me for this appointment. I understand how important this position is and how important every position in maintenance is. We are the force behind the scenes that keep the schools open and the students in their seats through hard times and bad times, hurricanes, utility outages, and we keep agent equipment and infrastructure up and running. A quick reflection had me ponder how I arrived with this opportunity so quickly, but really it's been a long journey. I did complete the active-duty service and civil service with the Air Force and now nine years with Volusia County Schools. All of my training and experience combined has prepared me to lead this department with integrity and compassion. There will be a blend of streamlining efficiencies and changing procedures to adapt our ever-changing needs with security and in the maintenance field. As a newly appointed director, I am very proud of my efforts over the years to earn this position and I am ready to get to work. You know, we have an incredible team full of talented and experienced people that are ready to continue making a difference. I'd like to thank all the people that have supported, mentored, and challenged me in the past. I'd also like to thank the other half of Team Kraft, with whom all things are possible. And finally, my brother Richard and my niece Caleb for staying to town a few extra days to celebrate this accomplishment with Maria and I. Thank you everyone, have a great evening.
Mr. Kraft, we want you to stay and once, no, you can be seated, but please don't leave because we're gonna do photos. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask Mr. Michael Owens to join us. There, yes, okay. So a little bit about Mr. Owens. He's earned his Associate of Arts degree from Daytona State College. He has certification with Security Administration. He has been working as a cybersecurity administrator with Insurance Office of American Law in Longwood, Florida, where he's analyzed and assessed information, data, and threats while engaging with personnel to ensure security. He has also worked as a senior help desk technician where he spearheaded technology management. Today, with your approval, I am recommending Mr. Michael Owens as the Senior Systems Administrators for Cybersecurity and Technology Services. If voted upon here this evening, his effective date would also be January 11th, 2023.
So you've heard Dr. Balgobin's recommendation, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, I have to say something for a moment. When I looked at your background and everything, I will tell you that this is one of the areas that our internal auditors are constantly checking, is our cybersecurity piece. And so I was very impressed and hopefully you're going to keep us very safe so that there are no cybersecurity attacks. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Members of the Board, Superintendent, thank you for this appointment and putting your faith in me as a Senior Security Administrator for Volusia County Schools. I grew up in the Volusia County School system from Friendship Elementary to Pine Ridge High School. It's pretty surreal for me coming full circle now, defending the people that taught me and helped me get to where I am today. I look forward to working with everyone and utilizing my skills in cybersecurity to execute Dr. Coon's vision and the Information Technology Services team.
Dr. Balgobin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Third, I would like to ask Dr. Kelly Edgel to join us. There she is. Just a little bit about Dr. Edgel. She's earned her Bachelor's Degree in Animal Science from the University of Florida and her Master's Degree in Agricultural Education, Soil and Water Science from the University of Florida, and a doctoral degree in Educational Leadership and Administration from the University of Florida. She holds certification in Ed Leadership K-12, Elementary Education K-6, Middle Grade Math 5.9, Middle Grade General Science 5.9, Agriculture Education 6.12, Exceptional Student Education K-12, ESOL and Reading Endorsement K-12, wow. She's also vetted to be an instructional coach in Volusia County Schools. Her many years of teaching began in Hillsborough County Schools in 1995. Dr. Edgel has been working with Volusia County Schools since 2020 when she started as a teacher at Blue Lake Elementary. She was also an academic coach at Galaxy Middle and a teacher on assignment/dean of Student Relations at Creekside Middle. Today, with your approval, I'm recommending Dr. Kelly Edgel as the Assistant Principal at Silver Sands Middle School and if approved here this evening, her effective date will also be January 11th, 2023. Very early in the morning.
Alright, Members of the Board, you've heard the recommendation from Dr. Balgobin, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Yes.
Wow. Haven't you done?
I can't think of anything right now after that long list.
Yeah, right?
Congratulations and thank you for continuing to serve our students.
Yes, I was gonna say, if I'd only still been at Blue Lake when you were there, our paths would have crossed at one point, but to have a resume like that where you've touched every level of learning is outstanding.
Thank you so much.
So if there's no further discussion, I call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman Haines, School Board Members, and Superintendent Balgobin. I am honored to be appointed to an Assistant Principalship at Silver Sands Middle School. Little did I know that moving to Volusia County years ago as a nine-year-old fourth grader who walked nervously into Mrs. Kathy Hutchison's class at Edgewater Public Elementary would set the course for the rest of my life pursuits. The caring, highly qualified teachers and administrators I encountered as a student had such a positive impact on me. They instilled in me a lifelong learner mindset and a strong drive to provide that same opportunity to others to embrace learning. I know I would not be standing here before you today if it was not for those individuals. I would like to thank my dad and my sons for their continued support of me as I have advanced in my career. My dad is always willing to listen and have discussions with me on education-related topics. We refer to these as edutalks. My sons have supported me throughout this entire process. I am proud to say they too understand the importance of education and have used their educational experiences to become successful adults in their career choices. I have been honored to work with some of the greatest role models of my career during my time here in Volusia County. Although earlier in my career, I worked in other school districts in Florida, my return here in 2020 has provided me with a new cadre of exemplar mentors, leaders, as well as sound experiences that have prepared me to serve as the Assistant Principal at Silver Sands Middle School. I would like to thank Mr. John Cash for having so much faith in my, I would like to thank Mr. John Cash for having so much faith in my abilities that he let me go and do, all the while being an amazing mentor. I would also like to thank Mr. Stefan Mallory for teaching me how to balance instead of juggle as an administrator and always being a sounding board for my ideas. The opportunities and mentorships provided by these administrators are beyond measure. I cannot express enough my gratitude to Ms. Patty Core and Dr. Drew Olson for having faith in my abilities and being true exemplars of instructional leaders. I look forward to paying this type of sound instructional leadership forward. Leaving my Cougar family at Creekside Middle School will not be easy, but it has truly been a pleasure to work with each one of the adults and students on that campus and I look forward to watching the Cougar Pride PBIS program continue to grow. Thank you again for this opportunity to be an Assistant Principal at Silver Sands Middle School. I am honored to be a warrior and will proudly wear the red and black. I look forward to building relationships and working together towards the goal of Silver Sands being an A school again. My commitment is to ensure the success of everyone on our campus, whether it be students or adults. I plan on leading with grace and respect each day and working to create a new group of lifelong learners.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members. Now I would like to ask Ms. Darlene Goripe to join us. Just a little bit about Ms. Goripe, she's earned her Bachelor's Degree in Marine Sciences from Richard Stockton College in New Jersey and her Master's Degree in Ed Leadership from St. Leo University in Florida. Ms. Goripe holds certification in Biology 6 through 12, Chemistry 6 through 12, and Ed Leadership, as well as she's completing her Florida Educational Leadership, she's completed her Florida Educational Leadership Examination, the FEELI. She has taught at Lake Brantley High School, Milvey Middle School, and Lake Mary High School. Most recently, she has worked at Atlantic High School as a teacher on assignment and that transpired since 2021. If with your approval here this evening, and I'm recommending Ms. Darlene Goripe as the Assistant Principal at Atlantic High School and if approved here this evening, and her effective date will also be January 11th, very early in the morning.
We don't let anyone rest. Okay, you've heard Dr. Balgobin's recommendation, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, is there any discussion? Alright, I have to say this because I live in Deering. I'm thankful that you decided to cross the bridge and come join us here in Volusia County. So, and we want you to stay on this side of the bridge, okay? So, we're happy that you, alright, we have a motion and we have a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, congratulations, it's unanimous.
Good evening, Chairwoman Haines, School Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Balgobin. I am honored to be appointed as Assistant Principal at Atlantic High School and I thank you for this opportunity to serve Atlantic in a different capacity. I would like to take this opportunity to thank my biggest supporters, my husband Michael and our two amazing boys Jacob and Cooper. I am forever grateful for their unconditional support throughout my career, especially that former drive I used to have. They are my biggest fans and I am theirs. I will continue to do my best to make them proud. Thank you so much for your love and support, I could not do any of this without the three of you. Thank you to the faculty and staff of Atlantic High School, you are all fantastic. When I joined Atlantic last year as your TOA, you all welcomed me without hesitation and I am forever grateful. You made the transition into Volusia County Schools seamless. I look forward to the opportunity to continue supporting you as you have supported me. Mr. Julian Doster, thank you. There is not enough time this evening for me to list all of the different ways you have helped me and supported me over this last year and a half. You have provided me with a countless number of opportunities to prepare me for this position and give me the confidence to pursue this next chapter. Thank you for your unwavering support and your continued mentorship. Lastly, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Jason Watson, Principal of Atlantic High School. Thank you for also providing me with countless opportunities very early in the morning to grow and for pushing me outside of my comfort zone. I look forward to supporting you in this new role as Assistant Principal because sharks are rising.
And our last for this evening. I would like to ask Ms. Julie Reeser to join us, please. Just to share a little bit with you, Ms. Reeser has earned her Bachelor's Degree in Social Studies from the University of Honolulu and her Master's Degree in Ed Leadership from the University of North Florida. She holds certification in both Educational Leadership, Elementary Education, Middle Grade Integrated Curriculum, Middle Grade Social Studies, Educational Media Specialist with a gifted endorsement and reading endorsement. She's been working in Volusia County since 2005 when she started as a social studies teacher at Heritage Middle School. She has also been an intermediate gifted teacher at Chisholm Elementary as well as an academic coach at Orman Beach Elementary. She, recently, as of most recent, she's been, I said, Orman Beach Elementary 2022 Teacher of the Year. She was named Orman Beach Elementary Teacher for 2022. And if you approve here this evening, I'm recommending that Ms. Reeser is nominated, is approved as the Assistant Principal at Friendship Elementary. And again, she will also have an early start time, as you know, very early in the morning, in January 11th, 2023. It's a lot of us, very early in the morning we start.
Alright, you've heard the recommendation of the Superintendent, do I have a motion?
And so I will gladly make that motion.
I will sadly second it because she's leaving Orman Beach Elementary, but.
This is kind of what happens sometimes. Mr. Clones taking her and he's very happy and Mr. Persis is losing her and he's not, but that's what we do. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Absolutely, and so welcome back to D5. I know you were at Heritage and so we're glad that you finally came back home and look forward to having you serve the students at Friendship Elementary.
Any further discussion?
Just thank you for the awesome job you did at Orman Beach Elementary. I know Shannon Hay, your principal, is as sad as I, but you are a tremendous asset there and you will be missed.
What maybe Mrs. Burnett and I should throw in here at this point is, it appears you've worked in District 3, District 4, and District 5. You have left 1 and 2 out.
She's done.
There's still opportunities.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it's passes unanimously, congratulations.
Madam Chairperson, Members of the Board, and Dr. Balgobin, thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve the students of Volusia County as the Assistant Principal at Friendship Elementary. I began my education with Volusia County Schools as a kindergartner at Port Orange Elementary and continued to learn from the talented educators of this district through 11th grade. When my husband and I returned to Florida after serving in the Army, there was no question where I wanted my children to be educated and where I wanted to teach. where I wanted my children to be educated and where I wanted to teach. I am humbled at the opportunity to continue my work as an educator in a new capacity within the Volusia County School District. I would like to thank my husband and family for supporting me. I would not be here without you. I would also like to thank the coaches and administrators I've worked with over the years for providing me opportunities to grow as an educator and leader. Thank you to Sarah Callahan, Dr. Julie Roseboom, Christine Barrett, and Mr. Persis for providing examples of what excellent leadership looks like. A special thank you to my current Principal Shannon Hay for her mentorship, support, and encouragement. Your guidance has made all the difference in my leadership journey, and I will make you proud. Though peace of my heart will always be at OBE, I'm excited to be back in the Deltona community, serving the students and faculty at Friendship. I can't wait to begin working with Mr. Scott and supporting the mighty Bobcats of Friendship Elementary. Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to ask all five of the individuals, along with any of their family or coworkers, whoever's here, to make your way up along this side, and we'll start with you, Mr. Kraft, for photos.
We're good, next room. We can go out this way, please. Thank you, next room, please. It's good. Next room, come on down, everybody. When we, when you meet Pika Mouse, do you light up?
I'm definitely getting a vision of that.
Yeah, that's the Pika Mouse.
Disney would retire.
We can go that way a little bit, please. Here we go. We're good.
All right. Looks good, looks good. Ready? Got it. Thank you. Congratulations.
We can go this way, please, and we can go, Mr. Cash? Freedom Elementary School, this way, this way, please, this way, this way. Come on this way, next room, please. Thank you. All right. Nice. Family and supporters and groupies. Sharp, look at that red hair, man. I want it. Beautiful, this one, please. There it is. Thank you all so much. Congratulations. Madam Chair, if you could take one step this way, please. Thank you. Okay, here we go. Family. Family supporters. You can come up here. I know. I know where you want to go is fine.
I know, I'm, I'm three minutes over right now. I was like, get these pictures done.
They're saying, get, get our house in order.
Everyone, please return to their seats.
With authority, she did it. Just keep moving this floor.
At this time, it is 6:03 PM, and so it is time for public input. Mr. Gomez, do you have any additional cards other than what you handed me? So, I have seven cards. For anybody that listened to this morning's workshop, we talked about having the flexibility to go ahead if we were ten or less, to go ahead and do all of them at this time. So, with my other Board Member's approval, we're going to have seven individuals come up for public input. What I need to remind you is that please say your name and speak clearly, and you will have a total of three minutes. Most of the Board Members may be jotting down some notes while you're talking, so that if there's something that we can address when this is over, we will, because we will not answer you during this time. This is your chance to speak. I'm going to announce the first two individuals, so that the first one can go ahead and make their way up, and the second one will be ready. So, first is Mrs. Elizabeth Albert, and second will be Amanda Elshimi. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Balgman. My name is Elizabeth Albert, and I'm the President of the Volusia United Educators. I'm going to speak quickly because I've got a lot to say tonight. First, I want to start off with what Grandpa used to say, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." Want to talk about this podium. Absolutely contrary to the conversation that we had today in the workshop about this podium making us look more professional and making us present ourselves in a better light, it does not. This podium, for those of us in the cheap seats in the back, creates a barrier. It blocks our view. This ribbon is offensive at all levels, particularly like this. I don't know that you've ever been swarmed, and as pointed out earlier this morning, you do have some young men down here that'll take care of anyone who tries to come close. So, I would recommend maybe we rethink this. I want to also say thank you to Ms. Mahaney. It was pointed out earlier today, all that she's done for our district, and we've never shied away from the fact of recognizing the hard work that Ms. Mahaney does in order to make Volusia County Schools better, so we want to thank her and acknowledge her. I want to draw your attention to the HR update that was moved to the workshop, used to be a part of the Board Meeting, but I want to draw your attention to Page Three. I have some questions for clarification. If you look at the total number of instructional vacancies listed for January and you compare that with December, we notice a decrease from 194 instructional vacancies in December to 141 in January. That was addressed, but not completely. My question here, that I'd like a response at some point on, there's a difference of 53 positions, so where did they go? The comment that was made earlier was something to the effect of how these positions shift to temporary positions in January, and it's up to the Principals to repost those. So, is that the case? They've not all been reposted, or have some of them just given up and are no longer posting those vacancies? I want to draw your attention now to Page Four, and I want to point out that from December to January, we've had an increase in our paraprofessional vacancies from 64 now to 80. That's a 16, that's 16 more than we had in December. Please pay attention to that. There's a reason why we're absolutely going in the wrong direction for paraprofessionals, and we need to address that. Finally, what I'd like to talk with you about begins on, I guess it's Page Seven, it's not numbered, but I want to talk with you about the International Teacher Program. So, at its core, you know, I've got some personal feelings about that, but I get it. I get it that you're trying to figure out how to solve this vacancy problem, but I want you to reflect upon this. If you don't fix the problems that we have in our district right now, in our classrooms, in our schools, it doesn't matter who you bring here, because they're not going to want to stay either, right? So, let's try to fix the problems that we have in our schools right now, so that the people that you have stay. So, you bring these folks in, and, and they're going to stay because they're going to be fearful of being deported? What is that all about? In other countries, teachers are revered. Teachers are respected and valued. What's going to happen when they come here and they're met with violence and disrespect and all the things that, that we're dealing with? What's going to happen then? Thank you.
Thank you. So, Elshimi will be Rich Purnell.
Hello, my name is Amanda Elshimi, and I'm from Port Orange. Good eve, oh, sorry, just a little bit, do I need my two seconds back? I wasn't ready. No, I'm not joking. I had to adjust the new podium. Can you restart, please? Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent, and Community Members. My word for this evening is priority. As I speak tonight, I would like for you to continue to think, what is your priority when it comes to each of these concerns? My first concern is what is taking place in our middle schools due to the sixth-period day and the lack of planning before the rollout of teaming. Teaming was supposed to be a way to bring back the fun in our middle schools. We were promised an opportunity to have more input on discipline, the curriculum, procedures, and guaranteed funding to create things like team T-shirts, team posters, and intermurals for those students who follow the rules. As normal in Volusia, there is, this was not rolled out this way. The only things that have been created from teaming is the loss of an elective for all of our students, the redistribution of administrative duties from administrators and campus advisors to teachers without any additional supplements. Teachers are now being asked to have more meetings in the morning, having morning duty, create school-wide procedures, handle school discipline, schedule and run parent conferences themselves, and implement PST. With the loss of our early release days and the loss of morning, morning time due to these extra meetings, we are drowning, literally drowning, in a district with the highest percentage of their budget going to administrators. It is confusing to me why they are doing the least amount of work at this point in the middle school level. Priorities. When it comes to the Performing Arts Program and other key electives, with the sixth-period day, you continue, continues, you will have none. Tomorrow, I leave for the honor of bringing seven All-State students to Tampa to represent Volusia, Volusia. Only nine middle school students as a whole made All-State choir in middle school. Seven of them were mine. I'm very honored, and as a distinguished teacher with one of the strongest music programs in the district, I'm telling you, next year, we will not survive this. We will not survive the numbers. Superintendent, I saw a great picture of you conducting the Awesome Band at University High School. Love that. Please talk to Mr. K., though, a great friend of mine, and his feeder, Mr. Bill Guthrie, and ask them how next year will look. I've had many lunches with them both, and if these numbers continues, you will be standing in front of nobody. You're going to conduct nobody. Priorities. Lastly, I think it's important to address your inability to prioritize salaries year after year. The majority of you ran on a campaign, "Making this the year of the teacher," says Mr. Cologne, "and an increased salaries like we've never seen before." I sat here and listened to you say that with the importance of increasing the superintendent 's salaries, after each time you get rid of one, you fire another, you get rid of one, that mindset does not live in a bubble. The Cabinet members sitting behind me all make six figures or close to it, and when it comes to teachers and support staff, you, all I ever hear from your CFO, depending on which one it is that month, that we don't have enough money. Well, why don't we find a more creative CFO? Why don't we task them with the job of finding the money? I'm tired of the broken record, we don't have enough money. You actually, why don't you actually take the time and go through your very own budget, set some priorities, and find the money? Like I said, it's all about priorities, and you need to rethink yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Following, following Mr. Purnell, it'll be Sheila Butchart.
Hello, thank you for this forum. My, has the tone changed since I first walked into this room? I want to talk to you a little bit about interpersonal conflict resolution skills for students, and I'd like to even extend it beyond students, given what I've just heard in the past 10 minutes. In 1972, in San Francisco, California, a group named Community Boards was tasked specifically to provide mediation training to the students of the district. And essentially, how they set it up was simply this, that they would train high school students to mediate conflicts in the middle school. They would train middle school students to mediate conflicts in the elementary school. And I see a couple of head nods, which would indicate that there might be something in that. We talked about lifelong learning. There is a skill that students would be able to carry with them after high school. There was a possibility that they would have six years in their public school experience that would put them in line to be some sort of a conflict resolution person, either on an application for college or for, in the job market. So, I'd like you to consider looking at not only the feasibility, but the value that a program like that might provide. My primary resource for you would be the National Association for Mediation in Education out of Amherst, Massachusetts. And there are other references that I can give you. You have my contact information, and please feel free to call if you'd like. But there's something about being able to handle conflicts, not only for yourself, but for others, I think is long overdue and needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Ms. Sheila Butchart will be Mr. Scott Cleary.
Good evening, School Board Members, Dr. Balgman. I'm Sheila Butchart, I live in Deltona, but I'm reading this today for Dr. Michelle Macklin, who wasn't able to be here. Schools defined as an institution for educating children. Teachers are individuals who provide instruction or education in a school or other learning environment, or responsible for preparing and presenting lesson plans, supervising students in the classroom environment, grading coursework, managing classroom operations and expectations. Schools were once safe places esteemed with high regard. Teachers were always held to the highest moral standard and respected as content experts, endowed with a passion for equipping students with success for life. Today, schools have become targets, where war zones in the, as the ails of society have crept into the fiber of operations and interactions. The ultimate goal of educating and doing what is best for the interest of a student has taken a backseat to politics so. So I'd like you to consider looking at, not only the feasibility, but the value, that a program like that might provide. My primary resource for you would be the National Association for Mediation in Education out of Amherst, Massachusetts. And there are other references that I can give you. You have my contact information, and please feel free to call if you'd like. But there's something about being able to handle conflicts, not only for yourself, but for others, I think is long overdue and needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Ms. Sheila Burchard will be Mr. Scott Cleary.
Good evening, School Board Members, Dr. Balgobin. I'm Sheila Burchard, I live in Deltona, but I'm reading this today for Dr. Michelle Macklin, who wasn't able to be here. Schools defined as an institution for educating children. Teachers are individuals who provide instruction or education in a school or other learning environment, or responsible for preparing and presenting lesson plans, supervising students in the classroom environment, grading coursework, managing classroom operations and expectations. Schools were once safe places esteemed with high regard. Teachers were always held to the highest moral standard and respected as content experts, endowed with a passion for equipping students with success for life. Today, schools have become targets, where war zones and the, as the ails of society have crept into the fiber of operations and interactions. The ultimate goal of educating and doing what is best for the interest of a student has taken a backseat to politics, social challenges, greed, and selfishness, depending on your perspective. Teachers today are battling more than ever in the classroom with inconsistent, ever-changing curriculum, micromanagement, student discipline, threats, violence, the mental health crisis, lack of funding and resources, most of which the general population ignores and overlooks because it doesn't impact them. But guess what? It impacts all of us as the burden falls on educators, falls on the educator society continues to put targets on. We are the ones that are consistent for our children. We are the ones who never give up. We always respond to the traumas. We encourage and provide for, out of our limited personal funds, to prevent our students from experiencing lack. So to consistently hear that there's no money for the increased hazards teachers face, because everyone has rights except us, is completely hurtful, disheartening, and disrespectful. None of you are sitting in those seats of decision-making and power, or enduring the daily abuses of your staff. If you would, if you were, you would want and do better for yourselves. So why not do better for those of us in the trenches every day? Or maybe you'd just like to trade places with some of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Mr. Scott Cleary, it'll be Ms. Carol Sawyer.
I see you're redecorated. I don't like it. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board Member, Superintendent Balgobin. I've come before the board more times than I care to count, and it's always the same thing over and over again. So being a halfway decent teacher, I thought I would try and remediate what I'm trying to share. And as a nod to the importance of music in the classroom, I made you a playlist. "Love the Way You Lie" by Eminem, "Round and Round and Round" by The Cure, "Hey You" by Pink Floyd, "Staying Alive" by The Bee Gees, and "Don't Let Me Down" by The Beatles. And if you know the songs, I think you might get a glimpse of my thoughts behind those songs. We saw some incredible educators up here earlier, but for every one of them that was hired in the years they were hired, more than half of them are gone. More than half of their cohorts are gone. The teachers you just passed in the consent agenda, half of them will be gone in five years or less. You were doing an amazing job at recruitment, but you were doing an awful job at retention. And part of that is while you sit there and you nod and you say the words, you're not matching your words to action. Because in the end, action means more. And that action means that teachers need safe schools, we need to address discipline, we need to address pay. Because very soon, very, very soon, teachers will not be able to afford to live in the district they teach. And that's going to be a huge negative for Volusia schools. You have an opportunity to fix it. You do have the money to fix it if you choose to look at your reserves. And I know I've had that conversation many times, but I'll share with you in the few moments I have left. In my youth, I attended many wilderness survival trainings, and one thing they said to me when I did my desert part was, "People wind up dead in the desert with full canteens." Are you going to let that happen to Volusia? Have a good night.
Thank you. Following Carol Sawyer, it'll be Laura Burchard.
Good evening, Dr. Balgobin, Chairwoman Haynes, and Board Members, Carol Sawyer, New Smyrna Beach. I would just like to expand on what Ms. Albert was saying about this new piece of furniture that now presents itself in our boardroom. You know I couldn't let this go without saying something. Personally, I think it takes away from the friendly, family atmosphere that we currently have in our board meetings. I feel like it divides us, and that is not the trend that we really want, is it? And most importantly, I can no longer see everyone's beautiful face when sitting in the audience. I now have to pick one of you to be out of my vision. If the podium is really what you want, could we move it back so the audience can see all of the board members? This way, the school logo could even be seen when the people are talking. Or can we find an adjustable podium, so that we can move it up when people are talking and lower it when people are not talking? People are already nervous to come speak at the board meetings. I don't know why they are, but they are. I think this podium will only make things worse. I already miss my school board family. Thank you.
Welcome. Hello, everyone. My name is Laura Burchard, and I teach at Taylor Middle High School. I joined the district in 2007, and this is my 16th year teaching with VCS. During that time, there have been six different interim or superintendents, along with multiple changes in school board members and district personnel. I am still here. There have been multiple programs like standards-based grading, four-point grading, Power Standards, CHAMP, Kagan, Teacher Clarity, PBIS, PST, MTSS, so many others, and many of these programs are no longer supported by VCS. I am still here. There have been a variety of digital and technological programs that have been purchased or licensed and used in Volusia County schools. Edmodo, Promethean Boards, Smart Boards, Mobi Boards, Scantron Canvas, NearPod, the old gradebook Focus, Oracle, School City, and so many others. We've spent hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, and so much of it is no longer supported or used. I am still here. None of the district people you hire, none of the programs you buy, impact a child's education more than a qualified teacher. Perhaps we should stop spending money on every program or technology with their self-proclaimed research, and start investing in areas with staying power, good teachers. Good teachers deserve good pay and good leadership. We don't need micromanagers and excuses. Perhaps quiet quitting and working to your wage are not that unreasonable after all. This is my 16th year teaching, and I make $275 more than a first-year teacher. What is my incentive to still be here?
At this time, we're going to take a short break, and we will be back in here at 6:35.
Welcome back. We are moving on now to item six point zero one, recognition of safety and security. Dr. B.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a staff member and also a public servant that deserves very special recognition this evening. Basically, this individual quickly addressed a situation, just coming back from from our break, that took place on one of our campuses. And this was during the very evening hours and performed admirably, quickness, responded, followed directions that were given, worked cooperatively with our Daytona Beach Police Department. And we would like to recognize also working with the technology piece that that was needed to identify and also apprehend the burglary suspect. This was something that was happening on one of our campuses. So at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Shadow Knight, who's in the audience, to come on up. He's one of our very own school guardians, along with Officer Joshua Dagley of the Daytona Beach Police Department, who is also here. Please come forward because we have a recognition for both of these individuals, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
If if you would, I would like for them to just share briefly without any specifics in terms of just in general what transpired. Because I will, I know that the board, you were all very, you were informed on this, and every single one of you had something positive to say and how, you know, Mr. Parsons, you were, I think, one of the first ones, and every other board member responded. But can you share with us briefly, without getting into too much detail about the situation and how it was handled and what really stood out about it? And then we have certificates of recognition for each of them.
Okay. Well, we received a, I guess, an intrusion alarm for Campbell Middle School. Investigation revealed through the camera systems of the school, a unidentified male was on campus, which turned, Daytona Beach Police Department was contacted, which I arrived on scene as well as they were, and we were able to locate the said male, and he was apprehended. Yeah, the campus was searched and was revealed that he did burglarize a building and had numerous items of the school on his possession.
What time was this?
I was in the morning. Two, two thirty in the morning.
That was very early, right, Mr.?
Just making sure. I see some eyebrows going in the back saying, what? Yeah, two thirty in the morning.
Two thirty in the morning. Well, pretty much very awake because they had to get into our system also for some information there. So would you like to share anything, Officer?
I will. So after a very eventful weekend of working New Year's and New Year's Eve, our shift had finally got a break to kind of mingle and take a deep breath, and then this call comes out. Nothing, a, a, a business alarm at a school at two thirty in the morning is never a good thing. So we all started racing there, immediately started setting up a perimeter. K nine units had responded, and we were able to deploy K nine within the school. And lo and behold, where my perimeter position was, we observed this unidentified male walking towards us. So he was compliant, we called him to us, we began to attempt to identify him, started interviewing him and detained him for the investigation. We, we then placed him under arrest initially for trespassing on school grounds. And, you know, due to the time all occurred, and then his story never added up. So I started going back and forth with him a little bit. And then, once we searched his person upon incident of arrest, his backpack, he had numerous items, school supply items, highlighters, markers, a whole bunch of other just miscellaneous items. One of those items was actually a projector remote that on the back it was labeled fitness room, building nine. And according to Mr. Knight here, video surveillance shows him attempting door handles at building nine. So reasonable prudent person would believe that he just committed the crime of burglary. Then continue searching his person. We found a bunch of narcotics on him, and he got charged with all that as well. So, pretty good, pretty good turnout.
Madam Chair? Yes, so at this time, if the two of you would come forward, we have a certificate for each of you, and we want to thank you for how quickly you responded and you took a situation and made it end up not being as bad as what it could have been. So thank you. Moving on to item six point oh two, recognition of Spruce Creek High CTE program. Dr. Balgman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have, again, as you can see very clearly over there in our audience, a hawk. I'm asking at this point our very own Dr. Todd Sparker to come on up with his work family. They're going to share with you a little bit. We have with him Mr. Thomas Bennett. And Mr. Bennett is actually the facilitator for career and technical education at Spruce Creek High. They've got a presentation where they want to give us an inside look when it comes to their CTE programs at the school. And so we'll, we're looking forward to this presentation. Anyone else with you, Dr. Sparker?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Superintendent Balgman, and we will bring them up momentarily. Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Balgman, thank you for this opportunity to, to brag on Spruce Creek. We, we certainly side about Mrs. Morris and, and her candidacy as the, and, and I told the group when they came, it would just be easy to make the recognition now and save you a lot of work on January. Congratulations to her. I've had the privilege of not only being the principal of Spruce Creek, but, but taught there during the mid nineties as well. And this gentleman to my right was, was a student on the campus when, when, when I was there, Mr. Bennett, a proud, a proud hawk, state champion, weightlifter, and obviously came back to the school and, and as was reflected earlier tonight, I think we've counted up thirty or thirty or so staff members that were former, former students as well. So that, that tradition is wonderful. Spruce Creek will celebrate its fiftieth graduating class in the year 2025. With our, our, our current, current sophomores. So it's, and, and a few years ago, we had our, our fortieth celebration. And at the end of the evening, we were kind of cleaning up and walking around, and I noticed a gentleman that was obviously looking and reminiscing, and, and began to talk to him, and his name is J. Scott Merrill. And, and Mr. Merrill was the school's first valedictorian, the first student body president, went on to, to Duke University and ultimately became an attorney and is now on the, on the faculty there. And, and it's been fun over the years to, to talk to a lot of the alumni, especially in those early years, and hear their reflections about the school and the building and, and what Port Orange looked like in nineteen seventy five, seventy six, which certainly looks a whole lot different than, than it does today. When I came to the Port Orange area in nineteen ninety four, I can tell you that the Port Orange of today looks a lot different than it did, did back then. But, but, but I say that to, to, to offer thanks to that group of individuals who gave up their senior year at Mainland at Seabreeze and at New Smyrna and came to Port Orange and started a school there. There wasn't a Clyde Morris, it was just, just Taylor Road at that point, and, and started the, the traditions that, that we still enjoy today at Spruce Creek almost fifty years later. And the, the, the programs and, and, and teams and sports and clubs and traditions that they started, as I say, we are, we are still benefactors of, of, of all of that. And when, when we have time to, to celebrate a graduation, for us to talk about our success and the academics, the arts and athletics, and, and that's, yeah, been a hallmark, hallmark of our school from, from those early years. And so, so I, again, I congratulate those early alumni. But we, we specifically talk about CTE today and the career and tech, career and technical ed programs that are part of our campus. Mr. Bennett could reflect on his, his, his involvement with that because there is a, a time when he was a, a teacher in this, 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 this field as well. And, and so there, there are some, some logos there of the different programs that we'll reflect on tonight. And we could go to the next slide. And, and, and let Mr. Bennett walk us through some of our, the specific, our, our two academies that, that we have, our two official academies, and some of the other aspects about our, our CTE program. And, and we certainly give a shout out to, to the district support of, of these programs. And that's certainly been helpful for us in finding ways, and we'll hear from the students soon in terms of the impact these programs have had on them as well.
Okay. Again, like Dr. Sparker said, my name is Thomas Bennett, the career and technical education facilitator at Spruce Creek High School. I've been in Volusia County my entire life, have gone through all the different levels of school, and did in fact graduate from Spruce Creek High School and have never been anywhere else. This is my twenty second year at Spruce Creek. And back in two thousand twenty one, fresh out of college, sorry, two thousand and one, fresh out of college, I actually started in the C T department, teaching drafting and design technology. After halfway through college, deciding I didn't actually want to be an engineer, I wanted to get into education to coach, to work at the high school that I graduated from. And after a few years, moved into the weight room and had a very successful career in the weight room of Spruce Creek High School. Still given the opportunity to kind of move up into the school-based administrative type positions as a TOA, and now as the career and technical education facilitator. And kind of back to my roots of, you know, where it all kind of started and, you know, things I had passions for even before sports and athletics. So that being said, I do want to highlight the career and technical education programs and academies that we have at Spruce Creek High School, starting with the Academy of Finance. And when we're done, we're going to bring up some of the students that are members of these academies to come up and kind of give their own personal insight as to what their high school life had been like going through these academies. First, we start with the Academy of Finance. The Academy of Finance is a four-year program. Students come in and with a, a set curriculum. The Academy of Finance is actually, it's the twenty first year, it's one of the oldest academies in the district, and has been going strong ever since. The, the Finance Academy kind of prides itself in preparing the students not only to go into financial world, into, you know, business degrees and college and, and move into finance as a, as a career, but along the way, along the four years of high school, they're actually being prepared for a lot of life lessons that they're, they probably only been paying attention that they're preparing themselves for. A lot of the things that they, they go through and, and talk about, I wish we would have, I would have been taught that when I was in high school. Instead of having learned it kind of the long, the longhand version as an adult, the students learn a myriad of, of skills and tasks that are very, very helpful in just everyday life in balancing personal, you know, your personal finances, you know, checkbook, all the way up to actually learning business skills, investment-type, business investments and, and things of that nature. These students actually, they'll, they will leave the academy with a certification in QuickBooks. And having dabbled a little bit in QuickBooks, it's not easy to do. Wish I, I wish I had, again, had that certification when trying to handle that program myself. The, along with the accounting, QuickBooks certification, starting this year, they're also getting the industry certification in entrepreneurship and small business. These two certifications are actually going to allow a vast majority of these students to qualify for the Cape Merit Scholarship. Whereas in the past, we've had maybe a few, you know, less than half a dozen that qualify for that certification. And then once these students in the Academy of Finance start articulating through those, we will have, I'm guessing anywhere over fifty of those students that are going to be able to qualify for that scholarship. So that's going to make a huge impact on these students moving forward. Next, I want to talk about our second academy. And that is the Academy of Information Technology and Robotics, which is a mouthful. That's why we, you'll probably know it more as ADR. ADR is a very unique type academy. It's based off of a cohort-style curriculum where the students come in, and it's sort of a school within a school. The students come in and they work, they do all of their courses with the ADR teachers, whether it be their English, their math, science, social studies, or their elective. whether it be their English, their math, science, social studies, or their elective Academy, Career and Technical Academy curriculum. The students have the opportunity to pick one of two different tracks, either robotics or programming. The students will focus on that as they move through their four years. While in the Academy of Finance, the students are encouraged to kind of explore their creativity, their innovation as they work through their curriculum. The Ader Academy works, participates in first robotics and is a host school for first robotics competitions. Actually have a large competition this weekend at Spruce Creek High School. Saturday, with a whole different, kind of a barrage of different types of robotic-type competitions as they kind of, I think, similar to what you see on television sometimes. You also, if you ever get a chance to come to Spruce Creek High School, make sure you do visit our Makerspace. We have a Maker Room with CNC machine, lathes, all different types of tools that the students need to actually build some of these robots from scratch, building parts from scrap metal to fit these robots as they go through. So it is a very creative space. The Ader Academy also touts six industry certifications that the students have access to to gain those on their way through high school. Outside of our two Career Academies, we also have plenty of Career Academy, Career and Technical Education programs as well. Spruce Creek has over 1,500 of our students that are actually enrolled in Career and Technical Education courses of some sort. Starting off, we have our accounting. Accounting is, we offer it as a program itself and not just solely for the Academy of Finance students. These students have the opportunity to go through the accounting courses as well, and they share just the same amount of success in passing that industry certification as the Academy of Finance students do as well. We have our new allied health program that is fresh this year, which was met with huge interest with our students, where we were hoping to make sure we had enough interest coming in and we were able to fill six of the Level One, you know, that introduction course, the medical skills course. And these are all students that actually chose, you know, that was their number-one choice on their application, on their school choice, their course choice. So we're anticipating that to grow successfully over the years as we roll that program out. We have our culinary program led by Chef Rudd. We have six courses in that program and all the way through Culinary Four. Chef Rudd is very, very anxious to keep building up on that and offer up, you know, even split up that Level Four and give students an option between a Culinary Four manager-type course and actually a second choice of a Culinary Four, kind of like baking, you know, option as well because give those students the different choices there. We have a very successful DCT and OJT program, which I happen to run that one. You know, we typically have between 16 and 75 students in the OJT program going off-campus and working in our community, which gives me, obviously gives me the chance to go out and visit a lot of these places, you know, maybe grab a lunch, you know, lunch or dinner on those visits as well. Digital Video Technology, one of our longtime Career and Technical Education courses. They provide us with our morning news broadcasts, you know, new style where they come in, they read the news in a, you know, kind of literally like a broadcast, news broadcast sort of way. They offer many advanced digital video technology courses as well. Promotional Enterprises, another one of our mainstays that have been around for a very long time, offers multiple industry certifications, entrepreneurship and small business, as well as the Adobe Package, which also helps, they provide us with our, you know, school store. Students have a chance to kind of buy their own Spruce Creek swag through that course as well. We have Web Development, which is one of our Academy of Finance teachers, kind of does, plays double duty with our Academy of Finance courses and Web Development courses. We have two very high-level industry certifications in that program as well. Those industry certifications also allow students to qualify for the Cape Merit Scholarship as well. So that is a very good program. And coming in, you know, new this year, we have the Advanced Performing Arts program that we're bringing in, which is going to be a great combination of our just stellar music program that we have at Spruce Creek High School and music technology. So we're wait to see how that folds out and builds over the years. So as you can see, we've spent a lot of time over the last, recently trying to build up the CTE programs, get them going strong. We have up to 20 industry certifications that we offer across the campus. Very useful certifications that allow the students to take these with them after high school, either put them on a college resume or actually into the workforce, you know, going directly into the workforce and having these credentials behind them. A little data here showing our, kind of our progressions over the years. In 2019, we were at just 63 industry certifications earned on our campus. We all know what happened in 2020, that's why that number is so low. But then since then, we've had a very strong progression. 194 certifications the following year, 209 last year, and this year, due to the introduction of the Entrepreneurship and Small Business Certification and several of our other courses and increased success in our long-term certifications that we had. We're actually looking at getting over 400 is my goal for this year.
As Mr. Bennett mentioned, 1,500 students out of the 2,600 that we have on campus are involved in the CTE program. We added this slide as well because of the complement of these other programs to our CTE program. And I must say, listening to Mr. Bennett talk, thank you to Dr. Barrio, the leadership of the district, Ms. Castelli. These programs have been on our campus for a long time. But over these past years, as Mr. Bennett is saying, certainly solidified it, organized it, and kind of helped us focus in on the mission or goal of making a student college and career-ready when they leave high school. And that's been an important focus for us. And the programs that are listed here add to that or bring another element into that. And I thank the board for the support of the Avid program. We found that that's been a great complement to some of these other programs and finding some of those students may be underrepresented in these programs and giving that support and structure that has made them successful and perhaps introduce them to, introduced them to some courses that they might not have considered otherwise. So just a shout out there to that particular program. So these are some great ways to follow us on social media. And if you were wondering if it's a great day to be a Hawk, certainly by following us through these social media platforms, you will certainly walk away knowing that today, as every day, is a great day to be a Hawk. And Mr. Bennett's listed his contact information there if you'd like to reach out to him. But I think we have a video and then we're going to bring up the students to walk us through some more of this presentation.
The Academy of Finance is one of Volusia County's schools' largest and highest-rated career academies. Currently, in its 23rd school year, AOF boasts a ninth-through-12th grade roster of 300-plus honors-level students. AOF's four-year program is built around educating students to be financially responsible. Whether they are interviewing for their first job, writing a check, budgeting for college, or buying their first car, AOF students are prepared to make wise, well-thought-out financial life choices.
The Academy of Information Technology and Robotics, also known as Ader at Spruce Creek High School, is a school within a school. We spend our days working on hands-on projects that include our core class curriculum. We also get designated time to work in our technology interest classes in the afternoon. One of my favorite challenges is ducks in a row, where we learned about how to build a resume, professionally dress, and speak at a job interview. One of the benefits of being an Ader is having flexibility in our learning.
Welcome.
Hello. Yes. So hello, everyone. My name is Bella Chandlee. I'm the president of the Academy of Finance. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. Today, I have with me my two classmates, Lola Watson and Lawrence Singletary. They will be sharing their personal academic and personal academic experiences that they've achieved in the academy. So Lawrence is going to go first for us.
Hello, I'm Lawrence Singletary and I'm the vice president of the Academy of Finance. The Academy of Finance means many things to me. As a senior in the academy and the vice president, finance has taught me many valuable lessons. But the greatest thing I've learned is how close to so many people you can become just by getting involved. While I've gotten certifications and learned a lot in an academic sense, I've learned infinitely more about myself, my peers, and made lifelong friends who otherwise I would have never met. I have many instances, but this one time in particular stands out. During our annual car wash this year, even being a senior, I became closer with everyone there and met new people. One classmate I got to know is now going to be my roommate at FSU. These types of meaningful connections are something that I've found consistently in the academy. All that I have learned about the financial world and can apply on a day-to-day basis is amazing. And with the added benefit of being in such a socially-rich program, I'm so glad I decided to join my freshman year. For this reason, the academy will always have a special place in my heart. It has given me so much essential knowledge in both an academic and social sense. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lola Watson. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you tonight. I have attended Spruce Creek High School since my freshman year and joined the Finance Academy a year later. Being a part of this academy has been one of the most memorable high school experiences. I've developed some of the best relationships with my classmates and teachers. This academy has taught me how to be professional, have good etiquette, be financially wise, build character, and be ready for the real world. Not only have I learned a lot, the Finance Academy has given me so many opportunities. For example, during my junior year, I took Accounting I and learned crucial life skills, such as writing a check, signing my signature, opening a checking account, and calculating and recording payroll. My teacher recognized my hard work and excellence in accounting and selected me to be the Academy of Finance student to work in the front office. I have used skills learned in the academy to assist with payroll, organize files, answer phones, and communicate with students and parents. Also during my junior year, I had the privilege to interview and obtain an internship through Launch Credit Union. Launch has a bank branch located at Spruce Creek. Through this experience, I gained knowledge working with faculty, staff, and students handling their banking transactions. The most important thing I've accomplished in the academy is qualifying for the Cape Scholarship. I struggled to meet the minimum test requirements for the Bright Futures Gold Seal Scholarship. In the academy, I worked hard and completed certification in QuickBooks and Entrepreneurship and Small Business. Because of this, I now qualify for another Bright Futures Scholarship, the Cape Scholarship. This will help assist in paying for my college tuition. My goal is to follow in my father's footsteps and attend law school at Florida State University. I am so appreciative of the faculty and staff who are a part of the Academy of Finance as we, as well as all of the others at the school, who have helped guide me through my high school journey. And as always, it's a great day to be a Hawk. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Superintendent, Superintendent Dr. Balgobin, Madam Chairperson Jamie Haynes, and the school board members. Thank you for allowing us to speak here today. I am Sheridan O'Sullivan, a senior at Spruce Creek High School and the academy ambassador for the Academy of Information Technology and Robotics, Ader, at Spruce Creek High School. I am also our first robotic competitions team's chief executive officer. So in Ader, we are a school within a school model. So we spend majority of our days spending time in Ader doing all of our Ader classes. And we do allow outside time for other electives like ROTC and band. But you cover all of your core classes and your technology electives in the academy with us. And we focus on developing the technical and soft skills of the students inside of our academy. We use our time in the mornings in the day to use project-based challenges to integrate our core class curriculum into our daily life so we don't have to spend a whole 45 minutes every single day listening to an English lecture. We can be working on a project and whatever project we're working on when we're writing things about it, that writing can be used as a grade in our English class. One example of a challenge we work on is the very first challenge that sophomores, juniors, and seniors do is called Haunted School, where we, Ader, put on a haunted house within our school. And we spend about eight weeks leading up to about the week right before Halloween, picking a scene from history that correlates to the grade you're in. So the juniors do, I forgot their history class. But whatever their history classes, they pick a period from that history and they recreate a scene from it and add scary effects so that about around like the 25th through 28th of October, we can set up the haunted house and all of the scenes come together. And we use this as an ability to fundraise for our academy with tickets being $5. And the tickets that students sell, actually whatever money they raise, goes towards their dues to pay them off. Another part of Ader that I genuinely love is that because you spend all four years within Ader, you make, you become really close with your classmates and you make very good friends. I know I've probably made some of the closest friends I have through Ader. And being able to spend every single day with them just allows me to feel close to them. And we don't feel obligated to always like hang out outside of school because we do spend so much time in the day together. So we'll be like, you want to hang out outside of school? And you're like, I'm kind of tired this weekend. Going to be honest. And we'll be, okay, see you at school Monday. And it's perfectly fine. I'd also like to say another challenge that we do that I personally love and is my favorite is the Ducks in a Row Challenge, which is your junior year, you spend about six weeks building a resume. And then at the end of the six weeks, the teachers actually set us up with interviews with professionals in our community. So I had an interview with a teacher at DSC to be a secretary for him. And I know one of my friends had an interview with somebody from the Volusia Manufacturers Association. We also, in the afternoons, dedicate our time to our technology classes. So I personally am in the robotics track. So I spend my days in the afternoon working on robotics, specifically first robotics. I spend majority of my time working on that. Currently, we just Saturday started the first robotics competition season. So we now have six and a half weeks to build a 125-pound robot to compete with. And in the past, we have been able to compete And in the past, we have been able to compete at Worlds, and we would, we're trying to make it there this year. And actually, the competition that Mr. Bennett, uh, talked about Sat- this Saturday, isn't actually our teams competing, it's our team hosting for, uh, the elementary school and middle school, uh, level children. So they do first Lego League, and they will be coming together and competing at Spruce Creek High School, and we are, we've set it all up for them to compete. We also work with the STEM specialist, Ms. Amy Monahan, to do, uh, what we call total district implementation, which is implementing first robotics into these schools in Volusia County, because first has allowed so many opportunities, it helps me find my leadership, leadership skills that has allowed me to become the AIDR ambassador and the CEO of our FRC team.
Good evening Superintendent Balgobin, Madam Chairperson, Ms. Haynes, and all other school board members. My name is Josh, I am a senior at Spruce Creek High School. I've been in the Academy of Information Technology and Robotics for about four years now. I grew up in Delancey, so it was kind of weird shifting to the whole Spruce Creek part, that whole. But, uh, they have tremendously helped. Starting your freshman year, they take you through what's called you building you. They ta- they teach you etiquette, how to present in front of, uh, just big groups, try to make you more social. But, um, they have helped me tremendously getting through high school and now leading me into Volusia Manufacturing Association. I am now trying to get my way into the Fame Program at Daytona State, which is their trade program, because that is more of hands-on and that's what AIDR is all about, and it made it easy for me to adjust, because I'm not a very, I don't like to sit down and look at textbooks, that whole thing, so AIDR was just a good hands-on academy that I ended up joining, and I'm really glad I did. One of my favorite, uh, challenges is Robo-Sumo. It is our freshman, freshman year, they allow, they give certain groups, you make your teams, and they will give you robotic kits, and you have to build, like, just a sumo bot, and it's, you end up competing against your friends, and it's just a whole enjoyable little gathering that you all get to do. I know I was even better at it, because I got to win. It, overall, AIDR has just been, just, it's the perfect academy for people that are so hi- that love the hands-on, don't enjoy the forty-five-minute English lectures. And just overall, if... They have been, luckily, I ended up with Miss Steers, she's been great, made my life easy, and helped me get my way through high school. So we have great, just great staff, our teachers are amazing, they all want to help you succeed through all of high school, they wanna help you move on through high school, get into certain programs, like I've been working with Miss Steers to get me, myself into Fame, because that's more of what I enjoy, like the whole welding aspect, I don't like to do the normal day job. I'd like to go out and explore. So, thank you all for letting us be here tonight. It has been amazing.
I did not know that I would be speaking, but here I am. My name is Kimberly Steers, I am the academy director, and I'm actually a product of AIDR and Spruce Creek High School. I absolutely love the AIDR program, as I've said, I'm a product of it. Being able to help students find a passion and just experience hands-on learning has been such a, such a wonderful honor for me, and, um, just being able to do that as a student myself and be, being able to see there's more than just, um, right word, there's more than just day-to-day after high school and helping our students find that as well. We've had students go on straight into the armed forces, we've had students go to college, and we've had students that start their own business, um, and just being able to, like I said, see them find that passion, um, brings me joy every day. So I'm very thankful for the opportunity to be back with them and to help them on their, their journey through high school, so, thank you.
This is Pop, the other, uh, teacher of Finance, uh, she's, uh, from, from, I recognize her, so... As, as the students, uh, discuss. As, as was said, certainly these, uh, the faculty and staff, uh, we owe them a great debt of gratitude in both of these academies, uh, for the time and effort they put into, to making these experiences, all, all that the students talked about. And I believe they have some, some creek swag for you here. That's going to be the envy of, of, of my staff, uh, ultimately when they see some of the, the items that, that you'll receive, uh, from not only the, the school itself, uh, but from the, uh, two academies also, so, so...
So, Dr. Sparker, I wanna say thank you, and, um, to the students, here's what was really refreshing this evening, just their honesty. And, um, so for those of you that, uh, don't want the forty-five minutes of, uh, English or the lecturing, I'm all for that too. But...
Persis.
Really to each one of you, you should... Here's the thing, you came tonight and you were just honest, and honesty is just absolutely the best thing, and it's what we wanna hear from students. We wanna hear honestly what's happening, and to the young man that talked about how the AIDR program, you know, you, you left the land and went over to Spruce Creek High.
Long ride. I'm sure all the paperwork was appropriated in that.
No, no, I think that's wonderful, because you found what was going to make you happy.
Yes.
And that's, every one of us, what we want for every student is for you to find the thing that's going to make you happy, and that path that's going to make you happy, and to hear that we've got, you know, teachers and instructors working with you, that they went through Volusia County Schools, and it made them happy and they came back to be able to spend time with you, all we can hope is that you will s- go off, find your passion, and hopefully return to this area.
Yay.
Uh, whether it's as a teacher or in a business, um, situation or whatever, but what I'd like to encourage you to do, you're here today because along the way someone encouraged you, someone paid attention, and they listened to you. So at some point in your life, when you get a little older, you can still do it now if you want, um, find a student to mentor and encourage along the way to, so that they can have the same opportunities that you've had, but thank you, they did a fabulous job.
Absolutely, thank you, Mrs. Haynes.
Thank you, Dr. Sparker, and your entire work family.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Dr. Balgobin.
You all have to come forward for a photo.
Yeah, Ms. Morris, she should, Ms. Morris, she should come up as well. Yeah, you've stayed the whole time.
At this time, we're moving on to item eight, point zero one. This is removal of any items from the consent agenda and approval of the consent agenda. Dr. Balgobin, are there any items requiring removal on the consent agenda?
No items from my end, Chair.
To my fellow board members, are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to remove for further discussion? I'm sorry. I need to put it on this side, I think. Mrs. Burnett?
Just for discussion, not to completely remove them, but for discussion, twelve-point-oh-five and thirteen-point-oh-one.
Twelve-point-oh-five and thirteen-point-oh-one?
Correct.
Mr. Cologne?
Seventeen-point-zero-one, just for a discussion. Actually, I wanna pull that, I wanna pull that one individually.
You wanna pull seventeen-point-zero-one? To be separate, and Ms. Burnett, you just want discussion on yours?
Yeah, correct.
Alright, let me clarify that then. At this time, there are no items that Dr. Balgobin wants to remove. Mrs. Burnett would like us to have a brief discussion on twelve-point-zero-five and thirteen-point-zero-one. Uh, Mr. Cologne would like for us to pull seventeen-point-zero-one. So let's go ahead and do twelve-oh-fi- twelve-point-zero-five and thirteen-point-zero-one, and then we will, um, move to vote for the consent agenda. So looking at twelve-point-zero-five, um, that is you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Johnson, you're ready to go.
Um, yes, um, Madam Chair, school board members, Superintendent Balgobin, um, my name is Earl Johnson, I am the chief operating officer, I was just told to do that, so...
That's right.
Bombing protocol.
Excellent. Cabinet member, you get one-hundred percent tonight.
Doing the right thing, Dr. Johnson.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, in regards to twelve-point-zero-five, um, you wanna know more about...
Actually, I just had a question about it. I, I know that there's, there's water intrusion, I've walked over the campus with, um, Dr. Dryer, but I, I just wanna make sure that once the water intrusion, uh, is corrected, that we address some of the mold and mildew issues going on in there, and I know you can't do that until the, the problem is corrected, but there, there's quite a smell in there from mold and mildew.
Um, um, yes ma'am, um, with the two hurricanes that we had, um, I know, like in the nurses' office, the art room and a couple of the rooms, there were, uh, a, a very strong odor in there. At this time, uh, we are mitigating those issues, and, um, once we are able to do what is called the tuck-in point, which is like sealing, we're gonna scrape all the mortar out of the exterior walls, because, because the walls are porous, you know, um, and when we had that, the rain and the wind, it created the moisture inside, and so we're mitigating that, and as well as this summer, we're gonna be able to not only work on the outside envelope, but also the inside of the building.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that we addressed that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So to piggyback off of what Mrs. Burnett just said, is this dollar amount here, take that piece into account also, to do mitigation for the mold and mildew?
Um, no, no ma'am, that's just an estimate of the cost of the, um, the tuck-in point, because what we're gonna have to do is, we're gonna have to go in and, um, scrape out all the mortar of each, of the entire building from the bottom to the top, and then we have to replace the mortar, a- as well as the, um, the lintel, the metal lentils that are over and do all the, redo all the windows, because we know that, um, put on gel elementary is what, ninety-seven years old?
Yes.
Something like that, and so those look like the original windows and, um, lentils in, um, the building, so we have to do all the replacement of all those. So that price that you're looking at is only for the outside, and that job is gonna take six months to do, four to six months, it's very extensive.
Okay, Ms., did, you removed yourself?
Yeah, I'm curious to see what, what that project is gonna entail, you know, I, I get it, it's an emergency, but, you know, I had the same question, is that gonna also deal with the mitigation and the, and the moisture on the inside of the building, or should we expect another million dollars?
Uh, at this time, I cannot give you the extent of the work that needs to be done, however, I do know that we are working on some of the mitigating factors in, uh, with the mold on the inside in terms of pulling up carpet and then changing some of the in, um, the drywall wall on the inside. Matter of fact, excuse me, I think with, within another week or so, they're gonna be able to move back into the nurses' office, because we completed that.
Like I said, I, when we're approving a two-point-three-million-dollar project without a whole lot of specifics, I understand it's an emergency, but I'd be curious to see, does so, as these projects come to us, will we be approving them as the bids come in and all of that, or is this a one-and-done, or this is an emergency, here's two-point-three-million dollars?
It, it's an emergency, um, so we can start to process, the bidding process and selecting a vendor, so we can get it done.
So all those will then still come to us as usual?
Yes. The, the project officially will not start, the work itself will not start until the summer.
Alright, very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Then the other item is thirteen-point-zero-one, Mrs. Burnett?
Yes, thank you. So on, on that, it was about the pressure washing, and, um, I know in the past, we had approved, uh, job description changes to include our staff to do pressure washing, so I was, I, I did an email you earlier and had asked about this, um, kinda just wanted to know how we're going to determine what we can't do and what we need to outsource.
There are, uh, uh, one, all of our schools don't have pressure washers to begin with, but those schools that have the pressure washers, they will be able to do the day-to-day pressure washing and cleaning of our campuses. However, there are areas like, um, the top of the roofs, uh, the top of Seabreeze at the, at the top of the gymnasium, our pressure washers cannot get up there, nor do we have the, uh, machinery for our guys to get up there, so the, uh, request is just to put a pressure washing company on standby in the event that we need to do additional pressure washing on our campuses. So we, we don't actually have jobs for them to do, but it's to, in the event that we need to do a roofing job or areas in which we cannot reach with our pressure washing machines in our respective schools.
So it's something that our staff can't do due to safety concerns and, and the ability of our machines?
Yes, this is something that we've always done, um, I can give you an example, uh, we have a pressure washing machine at Seabreeze High School, however, the pressure washing that we had to do for the mold at the top of the buildings and the roof, our team could not do that, so we had to outsource that job out to get someone in to do the areas of which we could not reach.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Persis?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, I was thrilled to see this, uh, this is so long overdue. Pressure washing is one of those things that is needed probably at every single school, but nobody has the time to do it, even if they have the, the equipment, it's one of those things, I'll get to it, I'll get to it, I'll get to it, and they just don't get to it, or their equipment breaks, or it's not strong enough, or they don't have the chemicals, or they run out of the chemicals. It's just some of this work now is so bad that you need a commercially, professionally-trained folks who do this day in, day out to get there and get it done. I mean, some of our schools, it's, it's, it's ugly, it's really ugly. I mean, some of them, I mean, the black mold on the top, just dripping down the walls, gum, gum that, gee, you can't even, you're afraid to walk on, on some of the con- on the con- concrete, uh, it's, it's, it's terrible, and you ask them, you know, well, we just don't have it, you know, we just don't, equipment broke down, this happened, you know, excuses, whatever, but I'm glad to see it, and let's clean up the schools.
Now my, I do have one final question on this piece, so when we look at, um, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, is that what we anticipate we could go up to that cost this year, or is that, uh, you know, will we exceed that cost?
We, we, we can go up to that, it's just a placeholder in terms of having that dollar amount in the event that we need to contract out for pressure washing in our schools. Yes, ma'am, we, we will not exceed that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Then at this time, I, um... Then, at this time, I, um, at this time, we have some changes. You've heard the proposed change, which is to pull item seventeen point zero one. Other than that, do I have someone that would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda except for item seventeen oh one.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, then, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, which is the removal of item seventeen point zero one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that part passes unanimously, and at this point, we need to discuss seventeen point zero one.
Board, in weeks past, we agreed to join the League of Cities. And I noticed that these events, they have three events a year. They have, uh, conference, they have Legislative Action Days, and a Legislative Conference as well. And none of those are listed on this event. I didn't know if we planned on sending a representative, if we planned on all of us going. Uh, I would personally be okay with sending a representative. Uh, I know some of you already attend a lot of these events with your loved ones, uh, but I think that that's missing on here. Should we decide to participate in those, uh, in those events, from the annual conference all the way to the Legislative Action Days, uh, which is in April, the conference is in August, and then they usually have, uh, Legislative Conference towards the end of the year. Uh, the, the annual conference is in Orlando this year. The Legislative Conference is typically in Orlando, and the Legislative Days, which is April, uh, third through the fifth, is in Tallahassee. So, I didn't know what our thoughts were. Do we want to include those on there? Do we want to include those on there? Do we?
So, I know what we, what we use to create the list were all of the FSBA activities and the joint conferences that we do with FADS. So, there are three items that you think need to be included that are not on this list?
Correct.
Okay, and so, can you tell us, can you state what they are clearly?
So, uh, there's an April third to the fifth Legislative Action Days. Should we opt to send someone? Nope, we'll be there probably two weeks before that for the FSBA Day in the Legislature. Again, doesn't mean we have to send anyone. It just means we, if we disclose it and someone opts to go, we would be covered with that. There's an annual conference, which is August tenth, uh, twenty-three, which is in Orlando. And that's the annual conference. And then, there is normally towards the end of the year, there's no date listed, there's a Legislative Conference, which is in November, seemingly looking from years past. So, if you all are okay with that, I, I would like to make that added to that. I don't know if we need to bring this back, if that's too much of a substantive, substantial change, that we should bring this back to the next meeting. I, I'm not an attorney, but I think it's, you know, this is really consistent with our membership and what we already voted on.
So, I do want to ask this. Um, after having reviewed the list, is there anything else that any board member knows of that you feel should have been added to the list that we did not add? Because by state law, we have to do this, so.
So, with that being said, I'd like to make a, a motion that we add, uh, the Legislative Action Days, the Annual Conference, and the Legislative Conference to this, which is with the Florida League of Cities, which we are now a member of. And so, that is my motion.
Oh, Mr. Wolf, I have a question. So, we have provided a list that was published with all of the dates. And in this, this just means that any one of us and/or all of us could be attending any one of these, um, events. Would we need to republish the list with the three new items that Mr. Cologne has brought forward? Or could we just state them and then update it and post it? You know, like later tomorrow with the three additional items?
I think it would be best practice to roll it to the next meeting and vote on it with the additional items at the next meeting.
I'll rescind my motion, taking the advice. And so, I'll make a motion that we postpone this to the next board meeting for consideration.
And so, what I'd like to ask of each of you is, if you could take a little bit of time, like between now and Friday, if at all possible, if there's anything else that we have possibly missed, that by state statute, we need to add to this list, get that information to Karen by Friday, um, so that it can be updated and included on the next, um, agenda.
I apologize, this hit me as we were sitting here and I-
And you know, we never, yes, we're joining, and we're actually joining this month, the Volusia League of Cities. And we, I'll be honest, we didn't think to look at their list of things that we may have to attend. But I would like just, if, if there's anything else at all that you know of, that you could be doing any travel for, that is school board-related, would you please get that information to Karen by Friday, so that we don't have to postpone this again or bring it back? Yes?
I'm trying to think, and I'm so glad that you, you caught that, um, Mr. Cologne. As a legislative person, um, uh, you know, there may be a time I may want to go to Tallahassee. I can't say I want to go April the second or the, you know, I can't tell you the date. But if, if our lobbyist up there or someone said, hey, it'd be good if you came with me to visit so-and-so-and-so-and-so-and-so. And usually, that happens with a very short notice. Boom. But maybe just some, something, Aaron, maybe you could figure out some language, just some broad language to give the flexibility. And not just me, but I'm just saying if any of us.
So, yeah, if we could possibly put, you know-
Visit during the legislative session, may travel.
Starting from February through May or something.
Whatever it is.
Whatever.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think ahead too, now, now that you've said that.
Mr. Wolf, if you could help with just a statement that could go on here. Because we're, we're still in compliance, because the first event right now listed is not till February ninth and tenth. And so, if we vote on it, you know, to approve or not approve it at the next board meeting, then we would still be in compliance. All right, then, at this time, we are, um, we're, seventeen point oh one is removed, and it will go on to the next board agenda.
Rescinded my motion? Then, I rescinded my motion.
Yes.
And postponed, made a mo- oh, wait, I made a motion that we, that we postponed this to the next.
Next. So, do we have a second?
Board meeting.
A second.
So, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, then, it is, it is removed to the next time. So, at this point, um, Mr. Gomez, do you have any more cards other than the two that you gave me? So, we are back to public input, and so, we have, um, two individuals. Ms. Jeanne Maddox will be first, and then Ms. Dorothy Featherstone will be second. Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Balgobin, Madam Chairwoman and distinguished board members. My name is Jeanne Maddox, and I'm a middle school counselor, the Florida School Counselor Association Board Member, and the president of our local Volusia School Counselor Association. I'd like to talk to you tonight about the Volusia County Schools' position for certified school counselors. There are three sections in that job description. The first talks about our required qualifications, the second, our required skills, and the third, our performance responsibilities. In the area that talks about required skills, we find that school counselors need to be things like, one, that supports student achievement, social-emotional development, college and career readiness, work with diverse groups, have a knowledge of technology, competence with data analysis, communicate and work effectively with students, parents, groups, and on and on. And then, there is the performance responsibility. There are three sections, twenty-two number bullet points. And these three sections are student success for all, promoting positive school climate and leadership advocacy. But there's a fourth section. It's called additional job functions, with one lonely bullet point, and I'm sure you can guess what that is. To perform other duties as directed by principal or administrator. There are twenty-two bullet points that cover mental health, academic achievement, college and career preparation, data analysis, the effectiveness of the school counseling program. But where do many school counselors spend the bulk of their time? In the fourth domain, under bullet one, to perform other duties as directed by principal and administrator. We are short-staffed, it's a fact, and school counselors are notoriously nice people, who want to do whatever they can to help, and they have a very hard time saying no. I have been to many, uh, national and state school counseling conventions, and I have to tell you, I have never seen a session on ways to improve your cafeteria duty and the top ten tips for being a testing chairperson, MTSS coordinator, or 504 contact. Our training and skills need to be used where they will do the most good in direct contact with students. And yes, while there is direct contact when you're wiping tables in the cafeteria and pushing the trash can around, disciplining students about throwing food or yelling or cursing is not the type of rapport we strive to build. The Florida School Counselor Associates Association has been working on a bill for about seven years to support the idea that is already in our school counselor description in Volusia County Schools. So, I ask you to help us with school counselors doing inappropriate duties and allowing them to build that rapport with students. It doesn't happen in the cafeteria or the testing closet or in an attempt to design an MTSS intervention. It happens in the classroom, in small groups, in individual counseling sessions, and in collaboration with parents and teachers. That's what we were hired to do. Thank you.
You. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Dorothy Featherstone. I wanted to put a face with the email that I sent out a couple of weeks ago to all of y'all. Mr. Persis, hi. I thank you for, Anita, for replying to me. Our school is, aren't, it's not just my school, I'm at South Daytona, I'm the art teacher. Some of you might remember me. Hi, Dr. Balgobin. She gave me a wonderful grant. The rubric for, excuse me, not for rubric, the discipline matrix. A lot of these incidences where students are hitting, uh, teachers, and so many teachers are asking, there's no accountability. It's because students are grossly exceeding, one, two incidents of hitting or striking, or even just the discipline as, or the disruption aspect, one, two, three, four, and they max out. And there's nothing that happens. The kids go right back into class, they go into the next grade, and we start the cycle over and over again. I know my administrators are frustrated too. They're the ones that are having to write up, you know, what to do when I submit a referral into the computer. They go to their matrix and they go, this is what needs to happen. But when you have students with twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty-two instances of striking, I just couldn't even fathom what's going on and what has happened. And it's not just my school. I talked to other art teachers in other schools, and what's great about being an art teacher is we see all the children. So, we get to see all the things that are happening in all the different classes. And just to tell you, I, I didn't sign up to be a teacher when I got out of college. I just wanted to be an artist. I just wanted to go paint and do my artsy-fartsy stuff. Oh, sorry. That's my old business. I've been, I've, I've been a business owner. I've done corporate jobs, I've worked other government jobs, and I just believe the Lord brought me to this position because this is where he wants me, and I love it, but I'm very concerned about the safety. What happens? We just had a six-year-old shoot a teacher in the, in Virginia. What happens when they look back at that child's behavioral record? I don't want this to happen in Volusia County. My son was at Mainland High School when that huge evacuation, and I about came out of my skin, thinking that my son was in the middle of a school shooting. And at elementary, at, at the elementary level, we look at children who are constantly being put back in the classroom, and we just shake our heads going, please, dear Lord, don't let that child go to middle school and shoot somebody. We all, as teachers, we're scared of it, because we're parents too. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez, there's no other cards? There's no other cards? All right, thank you. All right, so at this time, we're moving on to the final item, which is twenty point zero one. And, uh, Mr. Persis, you'd like to go first? But you're on there.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I just want to say, um, to, uh, my colleagues here, uh, and Doc, Dr. Balgobin, I think today's been a great day. It's a good, it's good to get that first one in, right? The first one of, of the, of the new year. And I loved, I loved having the Teachers of the Year here. I, I thought that was pretty awesome to hear them, and I was really impressed with all of them, as, as I guess I should, should be. They are, they are the finalists. I think our, our little dis- discussion we had at the workshop, I think that was very helpful too. And, uh, Angel and I talked just a little bit during the break about the podium, and there's four or five options here that we can. This is our first go at it, and we'll move it and play with it and, you know, uh, until we, until we get it right. So, I'm not worried about that part of it. But, um, I thought it was a great, a great meeting. It was a good one. Thank you, ma'am, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Cologne?
So, Board, I wanted to, uh, bring up a topic that's kind of taboo, but I think it's important that we talk about it. Over the winter break, many of our schools started their book challenging process. And I received some really interesting text messages where parents who were asked to read a certain book were extremely concerned that the examples that they were being asked to read were, uh, in the nature of being sexually explicit. To the point where we would probably, um, ask someone to kindly leave our meeting if they used the words that were in these books. And, um, did a little bit of research, and the state has laid out a process for reviewing some of these books, um, which I'm totally in favor of. I think it's a great thing. But there are some books that just don't even warrant, um, making someone read it. Example, there's a hundred and fifty-eight F-words in that book. I mean, there's, so, uh, there was a law, I'm not making this up. There was a law that was passed that said, um, interestingly, and this was a little bit different than a lot of the things that we do. It's a district school board. The district school board has the constitutional duty and responsibility to select, provide adequate, uh, instructional materials for all students in accordance to. And then, it goes, so it really puts the onus on us. Now, it talks about the process, but it goes down a little bit further and says, any material used in a classroom, made available in a school library, or included on a reading list that content, that can, that contains content that is pornographic or prohibited under eight forty-seven dot zero one-two, is not suited to student needs and their ability to comprehend the material presented, or is inappropriate for a grade level, uh, and age group for which the material is used. So, I believe this is our policy three-twenty, and, you know, some of this is really easy. I mean, there's, and- I mean, there's, and, you know, I did further research to say, okay, this is a hot-button topic. And mind you, I'm strictly talking about sexually explicit books. I'm not talking about gender identity. I'm not talking about different families. I'm not talking about any of that. I'm talking about a book that by definition falls under sexually explicit. It doesn't speak of a husband and a husband who are in a family and a rela-, no, no, that's not what I'm talking about. I can't even, I won't even be caught saying some of these things that are in these books because that would give an audio clip to whoever. But I think we should revisit that policy. I had a long chat with Mr. Pendley. Some of it involves defining, a lot of it is about definition. One of the counties in, I want to say it's Missouri, that's being contested by the ACLU. It's not so much the content as much as it was that they didn't define it when they went ahead and did that. So again, some of this is really easy. We would not allow anyone to come here and read that book. And I think we've been blessed that nobody has come and used their three minutes to do so because it would go against our decorum policy. It really would. And I don't know where anybody would, I mean, not only has the law changed, and, and don't get me wrong, there's still some ambiguity in there. There's a lot of ambiguity, which I understand they're going to. And, you know, there are going to be lots of occasions where we're going to need this book review committee to decide if something is appropriate, not appropriate, et cetera. But for the ones that are, quite frankly, just, anybody with a reasonable mind would think that doesn't belong in a school. I think our policy needs to reflect that, and I don't think it does right now. So I'd like to request that we bring that back for workshop, for further discussion. And because some of it is, I mean, it's crazy. And, you know, if we, if we, you know, there are words in our culture today that are on television that are considered appropriate, but there are some that are not. And to hear that that's in a book a hundred and fifty-eight times on one of our shelves, but our student would get suspended if he read the book that's on the shelf. I don't know what literary value there is to that. So if there is a consensus, I'd like to bring that forth for workshop.
Sounds good. Okay. So Mr. Persis says yes. Ms. Thompson said yes, yes. Mrs. Burnett, and I'm a yes.
And I think we're going to have to face this music at some point, but some, and there's going to be very difficult books that are going to come that we're going to be like, half of us are going to say, mm, the other half are, but some of these are easy. So, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Burnett?
Thank you. I completely agree with you on that. There's some things you just don't want out there. But I just wanted to say we're going to go celebrate some teachers soon, the twentieth, right? So that's kind of exciting. But it kind of bothers me, she left. It bothers me that we have situations to where we're repeating some of the behaviors in the school. And I don't know, I know that we're working on some things to help with that, but I wouldn't mind us looking at policies of student conduct, and maybe even with Ms. Rowland's help too, or whomever, the matrix, you know. And I know that that part is not ours to do, but as a team collectively, we can help work on that together because we do have to do something, and I know we're trying it, and we're trying to do things. Just seems like it's never enough. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson? So first, it was awesome to see all those teachers and be lifted like way up here for the county. Like, that was awesome to have. But like Ms. Burnett, that the discipline issue, I mean, it's, it's something that has to be addressed not only for our teachers, but our students as well. I know I talked to Dr. Balgman, I talked to Ms. Rowland about paper referrals being something. You know, I've talked to teachers. I know there's a bunch of little things we can put in place. I know we're working on a lot of great things, but just something to hold accountable that can't be changed and something that a teacher can say like, oh, you know, student did this. And I have these, these pieces of paper that say, you know, this is what happened on this date, and I have this record. And just, you know, holding our students and our parents accountable for the actions that happen in our schools and just really clearing that up this year. So I'm hopeful that we'll do that. So, thank you.
Okay, so just to share a little bit with you, and I know we had some brief conversations regarding the topic of discipline. Captain Shivers, along with Ms. Rowland and some of the other cabinet members, and I'm just repeating because you all pretty know this, this is just for our audience and everyone that's listening. We have gone in and really looked at our data and sorted it that by type of incidences, breakdown by school, number of incidences overall, comparing it to last year. What are the categories? And basically to share with you, we're about, we're not higher than where we were last year, but I'm not using that as an excuse because all it takes is one, right? So a couple of things that we're doing, we're rolling out a safety campaign. And at the Thursday board meeting that we will have with principals, that safety campaign will be reviewed in details with every single one of our principals. Basically, we're taking the code of conduct, we're looking at the type of infractions that we're seeing the highest level or the highest number in. We're looking at the code of conduct and identifying what are the sections that needs to be reviewed, what type of consequences need to be detailed for students. And that is something that will be done daily by the leadership, the principal at every school. And this is something that we will continue to do. We're also recognizing BBIS, the schools that are doing a really good job with BBIS. As a matter of fact, I have two schools that are receiving state recognition. And then we've got a few at the district level that are doing a phenomenal job, and we want to keep pushing that because that's positive reinforcement of those desired behaviors. So once we're done going over everything with our principal in detail and what it would look like, we're going to push it out the following week. But any type of feedback that they may have, we are going to make those, take those in feedback into consideration. I've also asked the team to call our view president right after and share after we share with our principal what it would look like. So she's fully in the loop and is aware, and then it will be the board members right after. So we will be able to see all that. We're going to be pushing it out. And I believe you and I talked, Ms. Burnett, at some point, we can have it as a topic in one of the workshops where we can go a little bit more in detail. Okay, this is where prior, this is what we're doing, this is what we're seeing. Because as you stated, it is a collective effort, right? We're also looking, we have identified a small number of schools, but for each division, primarily elementary and middle school, where there are walkthroughs again that are being conducted again by Captain Shivers and the team. And we're looking at certain specific areas based on the numbers we've seen to see what that looks like at the school level. We will have a conversation with the leadership team, and then if we have to look at their, their safe plan that's being enacted and any type of revision that needs to occur. We're also looking at those students with the highest number of disciplinary infraction, the repeat offenders, so to speak. And Ms. Rowland and her team are pushing in with trainings in those schools, but also really reevaluating the wraparound services. In addition to that, we have looked at specifically ESC category. And there is a number of items that we're doing as it pertains. We're looking at the full continuum of services, looking at what's working, what's not. We already had one meeting, and on the nineteenth, we're having the second meeting where we will finish up the details on what would be the next steps. I will tell you that with full transparency, that there is an item that we've been able to pick up so far, and it's basically a systemic issue for the elementary division. And I don't want to front load too much of that because I want to finish that meeting on the nineteenth. But I will tell you that it's, it's something that we can put in place for next year to kind of assist, especially the elementary schools. So that's what pertains to discipline I wanted to share. But I know you guys know this, but I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we're working behind the scene and some of the things that we'll be doing. In addition to that, you know, I, I take the opportunity to thank every group of individuals because it takes the entire community, everyone in their respective positions, to make sure that our students are successful. But I'm going to conclude tonight by thanking, I want to thank our parents, and I want to thank our parents for choosing our public school system for their children's learning. Because in this age and in this time, our parents have options. They have many options of what to choose for, for their child's learning. But every single parent that have opted to be a Volusia County parent or for enlisting and enrolling their child in our system, I want to thank them personally for doing that and for having faith and belief in our system. I don't know of a system that's perfect. I will put it that way. And I've, this is my twenty-six years, and I've served in many, many, many roles. But if you have a team of individuals such as yourself, Board, and I have to commend you and my staff, that are committed to always improving and doing what's best for children, then I think that's. And I think tonight, we've seen quite a bit with our students that were here today. I would hire any single one of these students, any single given day. Why? Because you saw character, you saw personality, you saw a high level of respect being delivered, how they were delivering their messages, and you can see that the learning that they are receiving in their school have been impactful. So with that said, good night to all of you and happy twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so Mr. Cologne would like another chance to speak?
Yeah, and, 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 you know, I followed, you know, Brevard County made a lot of noise, as they usually do. But what was interesting is they really haven't done anything with any of it. The reality is that anything they're going to do with it is going to require a policy change, and nothing has been brought forth different than anything right now. It's just been a lot of noise. And I want to assure folks that a lot of what was noise in Brevard County that made the news and all of that are the same questions I've had for Dr. B., are the same concerns that we've brought forth. When we hear of the teacher saying, you know, I'm getting hit every day, we hear you. And, you know, there's some we can share, some we can't share. But I think that, you know, in due time, there, there will be some changes felt that are going to lead us in the positive direction. You know, what we're seeing right now, I mean, there are kids we could suspend every single day of their life. They, they do something that can get them home every single day, which doesn't meet our obligation of educating them. But at the same time, you know, how many teachers and staff members are we going to lose as a result of that one student? And that's the challenge that I, that I've put out there, and we need to look at that. And so I want to assure everyone, and these are the conversations that I've had with Dr. B., you know, what do we do with elementary? I mean, we've never, I mean, I'm, let me take this back. I say we like I've been here that long. But, you know, there's never been, I don't know of any in-school suspension other than when I got suspended and they made me sit in the principal's office for three days. I'm not going to stop talking about it because I was that kid. But, but, you know, I mean, what, what, what do we have to do to? And, and so those conversations are the ones that I've had with Dr. B., and I share that with you all because again, you know, we hear about it on the news, we hear all of that, and I don't want anybody to think, I mean, if you want a loud sheriff, I think we could probably get the sheriff to get loud too. But the reality is that that doesn't necessarily bring the change that, you know, it just sounds good on television, to be quite honest with you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Persis?
Yeah, you know, we've been in this a long time, and so there's always been flare-ups of discipline issues at a certain school, at a certain level. But always keep in mind, it takes just one child to make the news. But remember of, remember the sixty-three thousand others who are following the rules every day, doing good things. I mean, great kids. They're great kids. And, yeah, you get one percent and, you know, it's like, oh, you know, what do you got to do with this child? But don't let that cloud your judgment, and don't want the public to, to, to think that there's mayhem going on out there in the, in the public schools because the teachers are great, the kids are great, they know what they're doing, the teachers know how to handle them. Yeah, there are a few outliers, and I think that's the point that Mr. Cologne and the art, art teacher who just came up. And I get it as a principal, for former principals, you know, dealing with it because you're trying to see both sides, you want to protect that child. You just, you just can't say, you're out, you're out, because to your point, that's not what we're in the business of throwing people out. We're, we're trying to educate them and to help them, and to help them learn what is it that they're doing wrong and the decisions they're making are not wise. So, yeah, so it's a challenge, but I think it's a challenge that with the superintendent's leadership, we can overcome.
All right, then if there's no one else, I'd like to just add a few things. By the way, you know, Happy New Year, and it was so nice tonight to have the five Teacher of the Year finalists come and actually listen to them, you know, because that's not something that I think we've ever done. And so I thank you, Dr. Balgman, for having them come. I'd like to piggyback off of what Mr. Cologne said. I too heard from some parents that started reading the books over the winter break. And I want to be very clear on this. I am, I am not against any book that tells any part of history, okay? That there's, there's the great parts of history, there's the bad and ugly parts of history. But children need to learn history, just like sometimes we as adults need a refresher course maybe in history. So we learn to not repeat things that didn't work out well. I also too am not against anything about families because all of our families are unique. I mean, there isn't a single family out there that's not unique. I mean, my children read a variety of books growing up, and I was a single mom, okay? But they needed to see that not everybody lived the same way that we did, just as, you know, we didn't live the same way as everybody else. I think what's so disheartening to me, and I have to wonder, when did this happen, okay? When did books creep their way into schools that have sexually explicit content? We still make, you know, kids have to have a permission slip to do the changes program, you know, with our schools. And there's nothing wrong with the changes program. It's about their bodies changing. But parents have to agree to the children participating in that. If we're going to, you know, at some point at the high school level, show something even like a clip out of a PG thirteen movie or whatever, parents have to agree to it. Kid, our students can't go get, go see an R-rated movie, you know, they can't walk up and buy a ticket. So why is it okay to put books on our shelves that are sexually explicit? Down to the point that I'll be honest with you, I personally don't want to read these books because having been a teacher for many years, what do we teach children when they're learning to read? We teach them to like visualize it, you know, so that they can see the story in their mind and all of that. I don't want to visualize any of this, okay? This would not be my choice of what I'd want to read, so why would I put it on a shelf for a child to read? And so I, I do think because with the changes of, I'll be honest with you. If you'd have asked me fifteen years ago, or you would have pulled a book and said, this is on a shelf in a, in a public school or any school setting for, you know, students under the age of eighteen, I'd have said, there's just no way. And one of the statements made to me over the winter break was, no one had to read these books to put them on our shelves, so why are we having to read them to remove them? And I actually called a former principal, who I have the utmost respect for, and I asked the principal, would you like to be like my committee person, you know, for this? And what was stated to me is, I'm not sure I want to read that stuff. She, like, that's not her choice of reading. And she's like, I'm not sure that I want to, you know, read that. And I mean, that's exactly how I feel, but yet we're asking people to read these sexually explicit books, which if they made a movie out of them, none of our kids could go see. So I, I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Cologne. And I, we're going to have to face it and figure out what we're going to do with it. When it comes to the discipline piece, as Mr. Persis said, we've been around a long time. And even in my career, there would be that, that group, okay? Like, they came in as kindergartners and they were a handful. They were still a handful in first. They were still a handful in first grade, still a handful in second grade. Some years you just kind of got that grouping, you wondered what happened. I think what we're dealing with now, because I've been, I've been closely paying attention, and keep in mind, I know a lot of parents that have elementary-age kids right now, because I taught them, okay? And now they're parents. And I've got my own daughter, you know? She was in the age group of kids that I taught, and she has three little ones. I, I don't think that the pandemic did us any favors, because I think some of these kids that never came to kindergarten or never came to first grade, didn't get the social interaction piece and that social norms of learning how to share, how to get along. But I'll be honest with you, I think this is a big part of our problem with our smaller children. Because I think if we truly asked, how many of you sit down at a table at night and have dinner and have a discussion, we'd find out it's not happening. So what do we know? I mean, those of us that have studied child development and things like that, what do we know about children? Children crave attention. They crave structure and routines and knowing what's going to happen and people paying attention to them. So my little three-year-old granddaughter right now was getting all the attention until October eleventh, when she had a new baby sister arrive. And her brother was okay with it, because he's, he's going to be an introverted kid, I'm telling you right now, he's going to be like his mommy. But she's acting out. And she's acting out because mommy's paying attention to the new almost three-month-old, and so she's not getting that attention. And, and it, it, it's a part of what happens, but we have to figure out how we're going to handle it. And what I would say, Dr. Balgman, is because basically what Captain Shivers shared with us, this is a big issue right now in elementary. Like, we've seen more referrals and repeated referrals in elementary than we probably ever have. Like, middle and high, believe it or not, don't have the referrals that elementary has, which is kind of crazy. I actually think we also need to look at getting our social workers involved, because I think it's going to take some tough conversations with some parents. And at, at high school and even at middle school, a lot of this has been handled through an in-school suspension piece. Because here's the other thing, especially little people, they want to be with their friends. Like, I mean, they're no different, I used to say high school kids are just still little people in bigger bodies, okay? And that, that's kind of how it is. But they want to be with their friends. And I'm not a proponent of just turning them five minutes later right back to the room, because you, they got the attention of the principal or of the academic coach or the guardian or whoever, and now they went back in their room and they can show off again for their friends. I think we may need to look at something where you're going to do your work, but you're not going to do it with your friends. And you're going to have your lunch, but you're not going to have it with your friends. And I think we could nip some of this in the bud and have some frank conversations with moms and dads. I mean, we can't tell them what to do in their houses, but just say to, I mean, we used to do parent-to-kids classes, we used to offer through the house next door some ways of how to get your children involved in being a part of the family and learning to do things versus you as the mom or dad doing it all. Because kids also need to learn skills, even at home. And so I, I'd like to say, you know, talk to, with Ms. Roland, and also like possibly get our social workers involved. Because if we don't fix the elementary issue right now, it's like I've said, if we don't build the house strong in elementary and with a good foundation where they can already read and do math, then those holes are just there and it's going to crumble when they get to high school. Well, if we don't fix this behavior piece right now in elementary, it's going to be a hole, and it's going to only be ten times worse when they walk into middle and high school. And you don't, you really can't fix it at that point. I mean, we're stuck. And I, I would say to teachers, consistency is the best thing. You, and this is, I said this to my daughter, if she's listening tonight, I apologize, Dana. You can't make threats that you're not going to follow through on, or you can't make statements that you don't follow through on. If you say, if you do this, this is what's going to happen, then that has to happen. And so at school, it's no different. We can't say to them, well, you know, if you do this, this is going to happen, and then they do it, and that doesn't happen, you've lost the game for the year. And so I, I think, I think we all could use like a refresher and just remind ourselves and, but we got to get it under control. And so I think we're all here to support you in whatever way to get it done. But thank you, everyone, and as long as there's nothing else, it is eight twenty-one PM, and we are adjourned.